Everybody, welcome to the City of Palaca City Commission Meeting, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five at six P. M. I am calling the meeting to order. We'll begin with the invocation by Pastor Mulberry and the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Borum.
That is about his father. We thank you again for allowing us to come together. We thank you for how good you've been all day long. It was you that woke us up. It was you that allowed us to see this day, and we thank you. Father, we pray your blessing upon this meeting on tonight. Pray that your purpose, your will, your plan would be made manifest. Open our understanding of God to what is necessary to move this city in the right direction. We give you praise and glory for all you do for us. It is in Jesus's name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Amen.
Please follow me in the pledge, pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you're sanctified, one nation under God, and it is all where they would be and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk. Assistant Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Campbell.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Campbell is not here today. He's had a new family member born yesterday. Congratulations.
Congratulations to Commissioner Campbell.
Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Mayor Carrera.
Present.
Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Present.
Thank you. We have forum, and so we can move forward.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
Um, I move that we move, um, agenda item eight C up on the agenda.
Thank you, and makes perfect sense so that the city clerk can conduct her duties for the rest of the meeting.
A second and motion.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you. So we will go right to eight C, adopt resolution two thousand and twenty-five R twelve, ratifying the city manager's appointment of Karen Hayes, MMC, as a city clerk of the City of Palaca. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Swearing in ceremony.
Welcome.
Good evening, ASI. I'm Leanne Williams, Deputy City Clerk for the City of Alachua and the Northeast Region District Director for the Florida Association of City Clerks. It is my honor to perform the swearing in of Karen. Please place your hand on the book of rules. And raise your hand. Repeat after me. I, Karen Hayes, do solemnly swear. I will support and honor to the best of my ability all applicable laws of the state of Florida, Plutnam County, and the City of Palaca. And I will faithfully perform the duties of my appointed office of city clerk in a fair, equitable, and ethical manner. Behaving the dignity and responsibilities of the office. So help me God. You have a new city clerk. Madam Mayor, Ms. Hayes didn't have the privilege of a penning ceremony. So tonight, as your clerk takes her place in your city, on behalf of the Florida Association of City Clerk's President, Board of Directors, and its members, the Florida Association of City Clerk's Professional Education Committee, and the Northeast District, we recognize the significant dedication and diligence one must have to obtain the municipal clerk's designation. Karen Hayes, we congratulate you.
Yeah, I've come, I
Aren't you gonna say every word?
No, we'll let you speak. You can say a few words. Let's just take the photo, or we can say a few words. We just did it in a different order. It's fine. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words, Madam City Clerk?
I am a person of less words. Um, I really don't like to be in the center of attention, but I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve the City of Palaca, and I hope that our future will be bright and rewarding to all of us and the commission. My doors are always open, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
On to the approval of the minutes. Has everybody had, everybody had an opportunity to review the January sixth, two thousand and twenty-five minutes? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. We'll go on to public recognition. Employee of the Month, Ms. Jones.
Mayor Commissioners, at this time, I would ask that we just move Employee of the Month for this time due to some unforeseen information obtained for our candidate until next month.
Okay. Thank you. Recognition, Commissioner Tammy McCaskill, eight years of service. It's Ms. McCaskill, Commissioner. She's not here, okay. Well, we're going to have Speaker, Mary Lawson Brown here. Okay. Reverend Flag. Reverend Flag's here. I saw Reverend Flag. Yeah, Reverend Flag is, could you please come up to the podium? To recognize Commissioner McCaskill, even though she's not here to recognize? Okay, okay. Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming out, Reverend Flag. Recognition of new Palaca, City of Palaca hires, new hires, Ms. Jones.
Okay. Madam Mayor Commissioners, um, we just like to, um, recognize all of the new hires for the months of December and into January, the first part of January here at the City of Palaca. Um, Ms. Karen Hayes, our city clerk. I'm Kristen Odom, our new CRA Coordinator. Melanie Lynn, Police Officer. Anthony Harold, Police Officer. Anthony Napier, Sanitation Driver. William Shelley, Police Officer. Amber Coover, Finance Specialist Two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to all our new employees. Presentation, Presentation Regarding School Zone Traffic Enforcement, Chief Shaw.
All right. While we're waiting for that, I'll just, uh, take a minute to introduce Jeff. Uh, as I spoke to each of you individually, I apologize, Mayor Commissioners. Please welcome. Uh, as I spoke to you earlier or previously in regards to the school zone safety, I want to be able to have someone come in and provide a presentation to you to give you more facts on what we're looking into and what you can expect to, uh, help with any decisions we have to make if we need to bring it back at a later time. So, uh, I had the opportunity to meet Jeff several months ago, and, uh, when the bill was released, uh, he helped with a lot of information, um, leading us in the area we needed to go, and also provided a demo for numbers for us for the city. Um, and I told him at the proper time that we would like to be able to bring it back before you all and provide a presentation to give you the information that he was able to provide to us at the Police Department, so you can be caught up, and then we can then, uh, have further discussions later down the road. So if I could, uh, while they're bringing up the presentation, if I could bring up Jeff from Global New Ball. Or New Ball Global.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Please give us your name for the record.
Yes, ma'am. It's Jeff Iannuzzi. I'm with Novoa Global, and, uh, we are a local Florida-based company. In fact, we're the only vendor that does this, such legitimately one hundred percent based in the state of Florida.
The presentation, is it the presentation you submitted for the packet?
That was a PDF version of it.
Oh, you can pull that up.
You're missing a short, I'm missing a couple of videos on there. Were you able to hook up my laptop, or can I give you that portion of it? Sorry, sorry.
That's it there?
Yeah, oh, wait a second.
It came up?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Guess this won't work that well.
There we go. Okay.
Um, I don't know where the volume's at, so we want to just make sure. We go ahead and start the presentation. I'll go into more after that. So, uh, who are we? We are a local Florida-based community, or vendor, like I said. We are the only ones that do that. I am a father of three school-aged children myself. Um, this is something that I felt like I needed to get behind, uh, when I started doing this. Um, they asked me why I didn't jump into, um, red light cameras, and I said that, quite frankly, I don't believe in them. Put me in front of something where I can believe in it, and I'll be able to talk about it with no problems. And I can, I believe in school zone safety more than anything. I believe the way that we do the program, um, for this will be beneficial not only for your schools, but for your community as well. Um, so our solutions, uh, we have a number of different solutions, uh, that are there. Obviously, we're here to talk about school zone solutions. Um, you can go to the next slide. And again, we're the only Florida-based, uh, photo enforcement company in the state of Florida. Uh, we have been here, uh, since two thousand and ten. Uh, we not only have, uh, partnerships within the state of Florida, but also throughout the country, um, as well as in, uh, some country, uh, in Colombia and South America as well. Um, we are the only Florida MBE company. Uh, we have solution, we're only certified Florida MBE company. Uh, all our text operator servers, processing, mailing, postmark, and bank accounts are in the state of Florida. Uh, we're extremely responsive, flexible, and, uh, our customer service is second to none. We also have an agreement currently with Flock Safety, um, for, uh, LPR integration as well into that, which the chief and I have stuff that length, and depending on how we proceed with this could be on how you want to do it. You can go to the next slide, Chief. All right. Again, some of our customers right here in the central Florida, we actually do railroad, uh, warning violations for the City of Orlando. It's not something that's a violation, violation supported system, but we do that for them. And actually, Brightline now, Tacoma, Washington, um, Winter Park, Florida, we have a red light program there, Fife, Washington, Pensacola, Florida, Chattanooga, Tennessee, Center Point, Alabama, Washington, D. C., and more, most currently, we now have, uh, Lake Helen, uh, is one of our school zones, uh, as well as Chieflin, Florida, um, our school zone, um, Florida contracts that are newly signed. Um, we have, we encourage you, when you're looking at vendors, to talk to their customers. Um, I, I believe our customers, I know our customers, will give you the highest appraisal as far as the way we do, way we do things in our customer service. Our customer service is second to none, and we make sure that we, we take care of our partnerships. Go on to the next slide. Um, what our equipment looks like. So from an officer standpoint, uh, when they review, uh, we look at, obviously, the, the high-definition photos, and they have the ability to view those as well. Uh, anybody in the Police Department will have that ability to do so. Uh, we use a multi-tracking radar system, uh, to track every single vehicle within the cone simultaneously. So how do we get that so that we know that, that violator is the person actually, um, committing the violation? Well, we go beyond that. We have algorithms set up that, uh, during the time that that vehicle's in the cone, it continuously predicts and then measures the speed every twenty milliseconds, so five times a second, it will continuously read that vehicle. If it's not where that vehicle is supposed to be, or it's predicted to be, it throws that image out. Beyond that, you see the, the green, the virtual green lines, they're based on fixed points, um, in every system that we do, and we, after all that's done, we take a time over distance measurement to determine the speed or confirm that the speed is the same as the radar. So at that point, it's just math at that point. There's no getting around the, you know, what, you know, what could happen with the radar system and all that other stuff. We use the radar as a trigger to trigger the system and, and get into the operation of it, and then from that point, um, the multi-tracking throughout the time it's in the cone, and then the, uh, and then after that, we go into the, uh, time over distance measurement.
Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible to move that into presentation mode? Thank you.
Thank you.
See that? I understand, yeah. Um, so you can see the different areas. We do make sure that the, uh, also that the, the camera is facing the flashing beacon as well, so that you can see that, uh, during the violation, and, uh, your officer will be able to review that, and the violator will be able to review that on our website as well. I'll show you that in a moment. You can go to the next slide. Um, again, just clear image quality. Uh, we make sure that you, you have the image quality so that we can help you identify who that driver is. The officer will then go through and approve the violation at that point. You can move on to the next slide. This is just a video of it. I think you might actually have to click to play it. But just a video of a violation. This, this one is obviously in the state of Washington, but this is what a typical system would look like. You can see the high-definition video. You'd be able to identify even other vehicles passing, uh, if need be, from an investigation standpoint. God forbid something happens in a school zone or whatever it may be. And again, we are just looking at the approve or reject is strictly up to the officer on how they, on how they do that. We at Novoa Global are never going to force your officer. We, we believe in officer discretion. Okay, we believe that's, that's a big part of this. Um, so the officer must approve or reject. We're never going to force them to do anything. I know some vendors, especially when the red lights came in, were very pushy about what they wanted and what they called a violation. Okay, we're, we're a little bit different. The trigger speed for us is eleven miles per hour. Okay, uh, it's state law that has to be ten or over. We, it's eleven miles per hour, so that there is no question that that vehicle is speeding. It's not going to be less than that. A violation in the state of Florida for speeding in a school zone where speeding fines are doubled would carry costs of three hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars, and even on higher up than that, if an officer pulls them over on the side of the road, not to mention points on their driver's license, three points if it's under fifteen miles per hour, and four points if it goes above that. So with us, these violations, first of all, carry no points whatsoever on their driver's license. They do carry a monetary, um, penalty, and it's a hundred dollars. Okay, so it is, I won't say it's nothing, but in comparison to what a school zone citation would be from a law enforcement officer, it is significantly cheaper and more, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, we do not have a recurrence of the same violator in the same school zone. So it, it is very effective in what it does. It will slow people down in your school zones, and it will make your school zones, uh, obviously significantly safer. You can go on to the next slide. Just more pictures of what our, uh, what our equipment looks like. This is obviously in, in a different area than the state of Washington. This is in, um, New Mexico. You can go on to the next slide. There's obviously investigative benefits as well. I think you got to click on that. There you go. Um, and, you know, we are able to identify the vehicles. This is a red light camera that we have in, uh, in, or, Orange County, in Belle Isle, Florida. Uh, the motorcyclist obviously went through all the lanes of traffic. He survived. Um, he did survive, but the point of me showing you this video, obviously, is the fact that our, our high-definition cameras will be able to pick up anything that's within that code, um, and make sure that you're able to see what's going on. So hopefully, you don't have any crashes in your school zone, but it'll help from an investigative standpoint as well for your police officers to be able to actually see what happened in, in, in those school zones and that kind of thing. Um, we do have LPR integration throughout, uh, with different companies. Uh, we've been, we've shown that we've been able to use multiple vendors to actually, um, put in and compare and, and figure out where a vehicle has gone, uh, with multiple jurisdictions and multiple vendors. So we're able to do that, and then we have the agreement with Flock Safety up there. Um, our LPR program, uh, is there to also give you another, another form of investigative assistance for, um, basically, there's no cost to you a, as a city. It's all violate, violator-supported, uh, on these, on, on these systems. Go on to the next slide. So that's basically it. I'll tell you a little bit about us. Again, uh, we are a local Florida-based company. Carlos Loftet is our CEO, President and CEO. He is very highly involved in every single, um, partnership that we have. Um, we're here to make your city safer. He is a big believer in his, in our mission statement to make our communities safe, and more importantly, the vision zero, uh, aspect of it. And these, uh, systems that will help your school zone, slow people down in your school zones, they will absolutely one hundred percent be also towards that vision zero, uh, statement if you ever choose as a city to, um, go ahead and apply for that. Um, I leave it open for you all to have a few other questions. If anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer it.
Does anybody have any questions?
I, I have a quick question on the, um, you mentioned that your, your company in the video that you have is all, is Florida-based?
Correct.
Everything, so there, nothing will go across other jurisdictional lines or anything as it relates to that?
No, and we are the only company that does everything in the state of Florida. Our call center is right here in the state of Florida. Um, our mailings come out from a Florida address. Our office, our headquarters is on San Um, our mailings come out from a Florida address. Our office, our headquarters is on Sand Lake Road in Orlando. Um, so it's, uh, right down the street from Belle Isle. Uh, Belle Isle's been one of our largest customer, I'm sorry. They're a very, they're a smaller city than the city of Palaca, but they've been one of our biggest partnerships that we've had for many, many years. And you know, we, when we ask you to sign a contract with us, just like any vendor, it's typically five years. It's a five-year contract. We don't want you to just say, hey, we're going to sign a five-year contract. Our goal is to have you renew it with us and, and keep on going. And if you ask some of our partnerships, especially the long-term ones like Belle Isle and Chattanooga and places along those lines. We've been in business with them for a number of years and we, we very much take care of our partnerships.
Okay, the other question is, uh, you mentioned a couple of acronyms, MBE and then you also LPR, uh, cameras. So can you give me an acronym for those?
MBE is the minority business, um, we're, we're certified minority business, uh, in the state of Florida.
Okay.
Um, enterprise and, uh, uh, we are the only vendor, uh, that does this, that is certified as an MBE in the state of Florida. And, um, LPR, I'm sorry, is a license plate reader.
Okay.
Um, and so what that is, it's, uh, we do have our own LPR cameras, but we also have a partnership with Flock. Um, the advantage to that is if you choose to do that, you, I believe you guys already have Flock as a, uh, but you can actually add to your systems. You can have more Flock LPR cameras, um, just based on how we do the pricing on this. And it's all violator-supported. So the, depending on how you choose how to go through with this process, you either will choose a fixed fee. Doesn't make a lot of sense with school zones because you have twelve months out of the year, kids aren't in school. That much out of the year, if, if they're not actually, you know, you're not actually having violators where payments are being made. Then you're going to start every, every, basically school year in the rear because you're going to have to owe those back months. It's still only going to be on violator-supported or violator-based, um, payments. But the fact of the matter is, we, with school zones, which differs from, from red lights, you have the option of doing a shared revenue. So basically you split a fee with us based on the hundred dollar fine, forty of it goes to state, schools, crossing guards, crossing guard training. Sixty of it goes to the, the city or the police department and out of that, we, we take a percentage out of that, uh, to pay for the cameras. And we, we do pay for all the upfront costs. There's nothing that the city has to pay. Um, we pay for the engineering, we pay for the permitting, uh, we, we install the, we have, we actually pay a contractor to install the pole. We have our own techs actually install the equipment on the poles and, and we take care of all that upfront. So there's nothing that city has to do upfront, other than the time that you have to, you know, pass a city ordinance and officer time, obviously for approval and things along those lines. But there is no upfront cost to the city of Palaca. We pay everything.
Any further questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, a few years ago, we got rid of the red light camera. Um, I think it was the the, uh, decision of the community. I don't know, chief could speak on that. I wasn't a commissioner at the time. But I know we had them and then they went away. I would like to know, why did we get rid of them? Um, but number one, first question, uh, was there from a push from the commission, community? Um, or what? Why did we get rid of those? First question.
Uh, I guess I'll be the first one to answer the first question, although push to get rid of them was a decision by the commission. But it was basically addressing the fact when we initially got the cameras, it was to address the traffic crash, uh, safety for intersections. And we found that instead of reducing, it was beginning to increase, uh, with the sudden stops and things of that nature. So some data that we provided to the commission helped on the decision to get rid of the red light cameras.
Okay, that's one question. So could that also hap- happen in these instances where people realize? And I kinda saw it in the video, realize that they were speeding through the, the zone and pressed on brakes. I know that that can happen, but I wanted to hear from you and your perspective. Okay, that's number one. Number two, and I'm not for or against, I just wanted questions upfront so we could think about them. Number two, um, is there any statistical data from our police, uh, department that supports, uh, the need for such, uh, con- control at our school zones?
Yes, sir, and I'm going to answer that right now as far as, um, so we did a speed study for you, um, at the Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences last March. Okay, and that was one of the roadways that, that was selected by the police department. And, um, during a, a period of three days, um, we saw a number of different violations, uh, within. And again, that's eleven over, um, a hundred and forty-four, uh, on the first day, a hundred and eighty-one on the second day and a hundred and twenty on the third day. That is people doing eleven miles per hour over in that school zone during that timeframe. Not to mention the ones that are still over the speed limit at one to ten miles per hour, which we weren't, we wouldn't be issuing a violation for, which there, there is more than, there's more than double that, triple that in some cases as far, as far as the people that were going over the speed limit. And again, any, any time where you have speed involving a pedestrian, let alone a child, you, you are, you are taking that risk into your hands. The idea to answer your first question as far as people hitting their brakes and things along those lines, yes. We want to make sure that the person is, is actually committing a violation. Now, where does the school zone start? The school zones were placed there as a safety issue by the schools, by the county, you know, and by the state. So where that school zone starts is where that person is supposed to be, um, obviously already down to that speed. Just in case a child runs out in the middle of the road, they'll be able to stop significantly easier. So we do want them to slow down and hit on their brakes beforehand and before they get to that zone. So we're, we're going to take that. If you looked at the, where those virtual green lines are, they're in there. They're not right, just right past, um, the line. They're a little bit past where that was. It wasn't right at the line and we'll go from there. And just to kind of piggyback on what the chief said, we, we have seen a lot of this in Florida. And I say we, because again, I am a Florida resident. Um, I told you at the beginning, I wasn't a huge fan of red lights to begin with. That's why I didn't jump into this beforehand. I have a, uh, I have a pretty long career and, and, and not only enforcement, but photo and video enforcement as well. Um, where this differs is you are not writing somebody at three o'clock in the morning or stopping over a crossbar or making a right-hand turn on red or things along those lines. In fact, we're one of the few companies that even before they made it, hey, you, you should be, it's, it's up to the city to ask whether or not they want a right-hand turn on red. We were the, one of the few companies that was actually doing that when we took over for Winter Park from a larger vendor. Um, not only did we increase the number of violations, but we actually decreased the reason for violations. For them, they didn't want to get a, they didn't want to get rid of right-hand turn on reds completely. So what do we do? We did a, uh, um, we put a speed component into that where it has to be twelve miles per hour or over before we issued a right-hand turn on red and, and the, and city went apart. So we try to make it work for what your city's needs are, um, and then go from there. And, and again, we just want to make sure that people slow down. We've shown this to be very effective in slowing people down. Um, you have some cut-throughs that are not city of Palaca roads. In other words, you have non-Palaca residents that are coming through your city and just completely disregarding your school zones um, and your speed limits, you know, overall. So again, the idea is for us is we're, we are not here to, um, go after the citizens of Palaca. We want everybody to slow down. But the idea for us is we, we have a public awareness campaign, uh, that is part of our procedure into this. And, and what we do is we make sure that this, the public is aware of these and we want their buy-in. I understand that cameras are difficult and things like that, but we want to protect your kids.
Mayor, uh, if I can just make a, a comment, um, in full transparency, I've seen the speeders through the school zones. Um, but I actually lived in a community that implemented a similar system. So I have personally seen it worked. I have personally received a citation when I did not know it existed. But the good news, it was in the thirty-day grace period because it was new to our community.
Okay.
Um, one of the biggest changes is that, um, and what caught me is that this system was in place an hour before school started and an hour after school started. And the, in any time there was, were students at school versus just a few minutes, we might see the yellow lights. The other thing I will say is that there was a significant decrease in speeders. There was a significant, um, decrease over time in the number of drivers who received citations because they learned to respect the areas. So I have seen it at work. It is effective. And the goal is to ensure that our students and people who are in the school area are safe during that time. And, um, if I had to be hit by a car, I'd much rather be hit at twenty miles an hour than fifty. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And I'll just, I'll just say to that, yeah, we also do a warning period as far as state law. Now, the, the state law for the state of Florida, it's thirty minutes prior to school starts to thirty minutes after. That's the beacon times that we do it. And yes, there is an in-between time as well. Now, if the schools, for example, have a breakfast, which a number of schools have a morning time breakfast, they're able to extend that beacon time for those breakfast times so that you have those students that are walking to school during those breakfast hours. So that could be why it was an hour before, um, but I, I can't, I can't speak on it. But that, that's the only other way that I would go before that. And then yes, during the time, it would go back to the regular speed limit. One of the things that brought up in Chiefland, for example, is we actually talked about with the commissioners about them wanting to do it at fifteen miles per hour before we issued a violation during the, during the non-beacon times while kids were in school. Um, in the end, one of the commissioners said, look, we have one of the high schools where our kids are leaving school and coming to school at all hours of the day. So for them, keeping it at fif- at eleven was very important to them because they had, they had kids on the work program. They, they were leaving school to that. They were doing dual enrollment. They were doing a number of different things, you know, that high school students do. Um, and then you never know what's going on in elementary schools and what's going on with the kids and things along those lines. So that's, and one of the things about us is that's completely up to you, how you want to handle it. We're not going to force you.
Thank you for the information. We want to wrap it up.
Well, I said I had three questions and so I didn't get to the third one.
Okay, go to three.
Um, not to be rude. So my third one was, how many school zones are currently in the city limits of Palaca? Knowing that we're going to lose two in the, in the near future. And will it take a dedicated officer to actually just review and do those, uh, those violations?
Currently, there is three that is solely in the city of Palaca. And we will have, uh, from my understanding, all three, uh, for a, a, a number of time for the near future. Uh, the three that I'm mentioning is Palm Avenue, which is, uh, Putnam County School Arts and Science that, uh, Jeff just previously mentioned. The other is the high school, um, on Saint John's Avenue. And then the third is on Hudson Avenue with Moley. So those are our three schools that we currently have. Those are the three schools that was tested. Um, and then the timeframe, we did meet with the school board and we did notify them of what, what we were looking into to make sure that it was something that they were interested in, um, and something that they supported. And we did notify them of all three locations and they supported all three locations. They also stated that they'd be willing to provide a letter of, uh, support to you guys to show, uh, for all three locations.
I think we reported that. I'm, I'm not, um, the comeback that. However, I thought it was reported that we're going to lose the school on Hudson Avenue as well as James, so there'll only be two in the city. I just want to make sure.
That, that is correct, but not, not in the near future.
Hmm. So thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
SMA Healthcare, please give us your name and city of residence through the record.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Russo and I'm the Regional Vice President for, um, Putnam and Saint John's County for SMA Healthcare. And my city of res- residence is Palm Coast though. And, uh, first of all, I want to thank you for your partnership since two thousand and nineteen for our drop-in centers. And, um, I'm coming to you today to go over the services that we have, a little bit of history on our organization and then, um, some possible funding options. So the first, the first page just goes over the history of SMA, how we came to be. We started way back in nineteen sixty-seven in our mental health piece and, um, nineteen seventy in the substance use. And then back in, um, the nineteen, nineteen eighty-three area, we combined the two agencies to become S. Stewart-Marchman Act Corporation. We then later rebranded as SMA Healthcare, which is what we are today. Sorry for all the clicks. I didn't, I didn't create the presentation. I'm sorry. Um, our annual funding budget is, um, ever-growing because we are, um, increasing our footprint across Florida. We are in six counties. And the benefit to Putnam County and Palaca is that when, um, a resident of the community comes to services with us, if we don't have the service, we can connect them to another county partner that does. So we do have a full continuum of care at our disposal. Then we have our annual funding by county and we get, um, the majority of our funding does come from DCF. In Putnam County specific, I've been working diligently to try to get rural county grants to expand our services. Because we are a smaller county, we don't qualify for as much funding as the bigger counties do. So my goal has always been, since I, um, came on board eight years ago, if Volusia County has it, Putnam County can have it. So I've been trying to get there. Um, then the next slide talks about, um, just the percentage of revenue per county and all of the different locations across all of the counties that we serve. So really just an, a broad overview. And then the next slide goes into the map and where all of the different locations, um, are across our county. And by the numbers, overall, all six counties together, we were able to serve thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-four clients. Um, in the packet that you also have, there is an impact statement or impact report and it breaks it down a little bit more per county. And if you need this Putnam-specific numbers, I can get those for you. But right now, Putnam and Saint John's in that impact report are combined. And then the next slide is, this is our, um, organizational chart of our executive management team. And so we are very, um, broad in our experiences. We have our chief medical officer who is a board-certified psychiatrist. We have a medical director who is another board-certified psychiatrist that supervises the, um, providers that do the psychiatric care in our age, in our different locations. And then we also have a medical director who is over our primary care programs, which we have just started here in Palaca. And, um, that's a very unique program because it is helping women who have substance-exposed newborns and helping pregnant women who are possibly using or, um, trying to stay in recovery and get them the medications. They need to do that and have a healthy delivery. And then just our goals for Putnam County, we want to be the go-to agency. We want to be the expert in the field for, um, for everyone in the community. We want to be that person that you reach out to. Uh, we have several leaders in different subject matter areas. And again, just because they don't work in Putnam County doesn't mean that they're not at our disposal. I can get anyone throughout Putnam County if we, specifically, we have our senior director over our crisis stabilization unit. He is an expert on the Baker Act and the Marchman Act. I can get him at any time to come and do a presentation whenever needed. So that's the kind of expertise that we have that we can bring. And then we also operate on our no wrong door policy. And that means, that's okay, that means that our citizens are provided the service and/or guidance regardless of their ability to pay. And, um, we are trying to expand our delivery services in every area of the continuum. Next slide. And we used to have a residential and detox program here several years ago, but due to funding cuts, we did, um, choose to close that program because a lot of the clients that we were serving in that program were not Putnam County residents. Because we were not a, a receiving facility for substance use. So a lot of those clients were going to Daytona and then we were taking Daytona's overflow. So we didn't feel like that was a proper use of the community dollars, so we chose to close that program. We are now through a legislative, um, budget request. We got renovations through the county to renovate this building, bring it more up to, um, you know, today's standards. And then we have a legislative budget request that was approved to be able to open a fifteen-bed residential program in partnership with the jail, to be able to do a re-entry for people who may have been in the recovery pod and need some extra time, need that help to get back acclimated to the community and get the services that they need. And then of course, we started the small primary care program, but our goal is to expand it and start a pharmacy onsite as well. And then again, we have been blessed with all of the partnerships, including the city of Palaca and all of the others listed here. And then again, we have been blessed with all of the partnerships, including the city of Palatka and all of the others listed here, especially through a lot of the grants we wouldn't have been able to get without the partnerships. And then just a, um, this is our full service of continuum across all of our programs, across all six counties. Again, having access to all of those just because they're not here. And then the, the question of utilization of funding, if we were giving funding, how would we use it? It would be to, um, again, be that safety net provider for the community, the no wrong door approach, ensuring that the citizens can receive services regardless of their ability to pay, and that we would expand our capacity in our psychiatric program, being able to help those that have serious mental illness such as schizophrenia and bipolar and major depression, and be able to also offer them assistance in getting medications if they don't have insurance. Medications for psychiatric care are, are so expensive. And we have assistance through our pharmacy in Daytona that can help with, you know, getting those samples to them at a reduced cost. And then also, like I, you know, have repeated plenty of times, that all of our services are open to the community, and we can help transport to wherever they need to go if we don't have it here.
Thank you. Any questions?
What's the cost?
Morning time, please. Go ahead, Commissioner. Go ahead, Commissioner Borum. Which, go ahead, Commissioner Borum, and then we'll get to Commissioner Jones.
All right. Well, uh, I know you, you, are you guys located, um, I thought we were at Krill and thirteen?
That is our drop-in center, and that's the one that we've partnered with the city since twenty nineteen.
Okay. And the other location that you had on the screen?
K. Larkin, right off of Saint John's.
Okay. So then both in, in, in the city of?
Yes.
Okay. And again, like you said, you were gonna, um, also provide the, the stats for?
Putnam-specific.
Um, I like to see the, the breakout for Palacca as well, but we need to work closely with the, with the county as well because it's certainly a need for not just to separate the county and the city, but it's certainly a need for our county as a whole. So we need to work those. But I'd just like to see the number.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner Borum, I answered pretty much what I wanted.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next presentation, the Blue Crab Book Rewards Program.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Uh, Mayor, City Manager, City Staff, my fellow Palaco citizens. Um, my name is Kalina Mayabu. Some of you may know me as the editor of the Dancing Mastodon Magazine, which is a magazine here in North Palaca. I am here actually for a inquiry request for funding of a program that I created uh, in collaboration with Blue Crab Productions, the Putnam County School District officials, and also, um, the Putnam Chamber of Commerce. Uh, not to take up a lot of time, uh, short synopsis. Uh, if, if you remember the Bookit program, uh, the Bookit program, uh, was a program that was designed the previous generation to essentially boost reading scores for students. Uh, that program essentially, when a student completed their reading goals or tasks at a school, they were gifted a reward, uh, uh, a free pizza, free small personal pan pizza. And, um, uh, for the students, that was a, a, something that actually increased their act, their, their, their motivation. It was a positive reinforcement for them. Essentially, uh, we took that old idea and we're bringing that, we're customizing that idea for the local area for our students. So, um, for, so, so essentially, a student in one of our elementary schools, our participating elementary schools, uh, we are covering James A. Long, Mellon, um, Mosley Elementary, uh, the Children Reading Center, Kelly Smith, the Putnam Library, and other elementary schools also in the, the county. So once a student, uh, completes their reading tasks at their individual schools, whether it's AR or, uh, Reading One Eighty, essentially, we would gift them a, a, a ten-dollar certificate to a local business here. So instead of them going to a, a national brand store, that they will actually be given a gift certificate to a local business. And, um, essentially, it will go to drive, um, local, our local economy. We can go back to the first slide. Yes. The, this one, yes. Uh, so I am charged with developing, uh, local youth business programs. And I established that promotion of literacy is going to be a founding principle of the programs to ensure our youth and our future residents are literate, and the community continues to invest in literacy as an inheritance so that when our students grow up, they'll be able to make conscious, sound decisions. So I developed this, uh, with coordination with, uh, Put- Putnam County School Board officials. We went over the numbers of the different schools, uh, what are the percentage of students who are performing on task with their reading levels? What can we do to, um, help them in- increase their reading scores? And essentially, um, we came up with this program. It's aimed at fifty-eight, the fifty-eight hundred students, elementary school students in our district are in our county. After going over the previous, the previous years and what students are currently doing in their, their reading, uh, we, we essentially figured out that about twenty percent of the students in most of the schools complete their reading tasks. So we targeted twelve hundred students in all. Um, that's our, um, projected number of students who actually complete their reading tasks at their schools. Um, and this is using the already, um, s- reading programs of Accelerated Reader and, um, Read One Eighty. So upon completion of their reading scores are their, their, their reading tasks, we gift them with a ten-dollar certificate to a local business, a local participating business. Um, most of the businesses are already affiliated with the Putnam County Chamber, um, but the requirement is that they are a local business. You can go to the next slide. Uh, these are some of the businesses that we've already, uh, spoken with. Uh, I'm looking to, um, add additional businesses as well. Uh, we just wanted to make sure that we build our funding gap. This is a direct, it, I, I call it washing two backs. Essentially, um, the students are rewarded for their reading scores. We're, we're encouraging, giving them a positive reinforcement for reading. And then, um, us, a- also, we are having a direct impact on the local business as well.
Thank you. Is there any? Okay. Okay, sorry.
Um, yeah, just to go real quick, uh, Putnam County Chamber of Commerce is going to be our, our fiscal agent, so they're going to be our quarterback on this and financial advisor, our program costs is, uh, thirteen point four K. Um, we're requesting, uh, fi- a five K from the city of Palacca. Um, our other, uh, the other, the other places that we are going for funding is going to be the, the Putnam County Government and also, um, Community Foundation of Northeast Florida, and that will essentially, uh, cover our basis. Um, the last one. So what are the benefits of the program? Um, not only are we promoting literacy and giving the students a, a tangible reward, all of us, um, if, if you partici- participated in the Bookit program, you know how it motivated you. Uh, but at the end of this program, we'll be able, because this is the only reading program that's going to be, uh, introduced this semester, in the last semester in the district. At the end of the program, we will be able to, to, to determine if their reading gains are losses of, of all of the, at all of the elementary schools, if this program works. If it works, then we will actually roll it over into the secondary, um, as well. So it, it, it will not just be elementary, will, it will also encompass the secondary as well. So, um, benefits of tangible rewards, um, students, um, understanding that concept of learning, being, going from learning, a learner to an earner. What you learn also, uh, affects how you earn. And then also, our local bi- businesses will benefit from these rewards and increased sales.
Thanks. Question, Commissioner Davis?
Yes, um, I noticed you said in the slide, uh, the program cost is thirteen point four thousand dollars.
Yes.
And you are requesting funds from the city of Palacca for, I think I saw five to ten K?
Yes, but just five. Uh, we will be requesting seven from the county and other, um, from other sources.
Okay. So, um, there are, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there are three elementary schools in the city of Palacca? Mosley, James A. Long, and Kelly Smith?
Yes.
So I know, al- also, you referenced that this is a program in partnership with Putnam County Schools and the Chamber. And you are coming to the city of Palacca only, uh, I'm assuming, other than the other, um, financing sources you identified?
Yes.
But no other municipalities in Putnam County for their schools?
Uh, well, it's got, we're, we're basically, I'm coming to the city, the Putnam County, the Putnam County, um, government. Um, and we will also, um, look for funding amongst other sources to fill wherever we can fill that gap.
I think the, so, uh, I see, I'm also going to be, as I think Commissioner Davis was alluding to, the elementary school, say, in Crescent City or in Interlock, and are you approaching those municipalities? Okay. And I don't know that.
So if that's the case, and, and I, I just look, just looking at a little math, so five K is about thirty-seven percent of this thirteen point four thousand dollar total program cost. Is the program cost per year a total program cost? How long is the program? Just some details, and what's included in the program cost?
Okay. Um, so the program cost is initially the launch of, for the fourth quarter. This program will begin spring break and end at the end of the school year. Um, what are projected number of twelve hundred students, essentially? Um, ten dollars, um, per twelve hundred students, um, that gives us that twelve thou- thousand mark there. And then we have an administrative fee at it, and that's the program cost.
Any additional questions? Oh, and Commissioner Campbell will be right with you, one minute.
Uh, Commissioner Campbell, go ahead.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Commissioner Borum. Thank you, Mayor. And I actually kind of want to piggyback on the questions that Commissioner Davis inquired with the given, um, and asking for the amount that we ha- that you're asking for us. What is the buy-in financially from the school district, being that this is something that is going to be implemented, uh, via the school district? What is the buy-in financially with them?
Well, essentially, this is kind of a, a preliminary, um, program that is, uh, let me get this right. That is a initiative by Blue Crab, uh, the Putnam Chamber, and my, a- and Blue Crab and Putnam Chamber, we're essentially launching this program. It's a, it's a program that we designed. If, if the district, um, if the program is successful, then the district itself would, uh, be interested.
Be interested financially or be interested?
Be interested financially. The district is not, uh, is not contributing to this program. This is, um, strictly from the citizens.
Okay. And my next question is, do you have the data of students that did participate in the Bookit or currently participates in the AR? And how did you come up with the number of twelve hundred?
Yes, we do have the data. Um, so essentially, uh, the AR program automatically, uh, puts out the data for each school of which students are completing their task. And essentially, we are going to be piggybacking on the A, the AR data of those students. So that's the data that we use to determine our, our twelve hundred number of what the students, what students were already completing their reading tasks. So we, we went over, uh, each of the schools from last year and saw, okay, um, James A. Long, for example, okay, this was the number, uh, this are, this is the total number of students they have, and this is the number of students who are actually reaching their meeting goals. And, uh, we did that with each of the schools, and we determined that, uh, um, based on that data, that twenty percent of the students are basically finishing their reading goals. So that was something that we wanted, that was the number that we used as our basis for coming up with the twelve hundred students.
So I just want to make sure that I have a complete understanding. This is going to piggyback off existing, uh, prof- I mean, profiles that have already been established. We're just rewarding, or you're just looking to reward students double because they'll get rewarded from the school level, however they get rewarded, but you're looking to reward them from the community as well.
Yes, this is a, a reciprocal program. I believe this school has a, a program where they actually gift the students books already. Um, what, that program is more, this program is more designed as a, a re- a positive reinforcement, not just a, hey, um, you should read more of our, our, you know, these books, but you know, we're kind of gifting, you know?
No, I just want to make sure that there's an understanding to my fellow commissioners that we, that you're looking to piggyback off an existing program.
Yes, yes.
Any further questions, Commissioner? I, I know you do. No, I'm talking about Commissioner. Campbell, do you have any more questions, Commissioner Campbell?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Borum?
Yes, I, I think it's a aw- awesome program to try to target those who really need to step up and improve their reading skills. Um, but again, going back to the breakdown as it relates to which entities are given funding to this and that, um, that, that the school district doesn't have any buy-in to it, that's what I'm understanding.
Uh, well, I just, we worked with the school district officials to basically come up with the numbers. The school district, as of yet, this, it's kind of a, a experimental, so just to see if this will, um, if this will have a effect, positive or negative, on the reading scores.
My question was, was there buy-in? That's my question.
Yes.
There's buy-in? Financial buy-in?
Not financial, but just.
That's my, what's my question?
No.
Okay. And so we got that entity, we got the, um, Putnam County Chamber of Commerce.
Yes.
What's their contribution?
They're going to be our fiscal agent.
They're not going to be fiscal contributors?
No.
Okay. And then also the Blue Crab, how much you guys are?
So Blue Crab is actually just the organization where I am designing their programs, their business programs.
Okay. So, but you're, you're coming to agencies or organizations and we're asking for funding, but then there's no contributions from, uh, the agencies that's closest to the students? That's what I'm hearing.
Blue Crab is essentially the, Blue Crab Productions is the program that actually had, brought me in to create local youth business programs. And this is the first initiative that I'm coming out of Blue Crab with in collaboration with the Putnam Chamber and, um, yes, the.
I understand that, but the, I, I'm not, what I'm, what I'm saying is, I, I'd like to see buy-in, skin in the game from everybody who's part of Putnam County and to help these young people increase and improve their reading and so that they can get. increase and improve their reading and so that they can get these rewards and be recognized. And also, not only their reading, but we want to make sure, I don't know how you're looking at the comprehension side of things. So how is that being measured as it relates to just the reading portion?
I believe that in the piggybacking with, on the AR program, essentially, I believe AR has a number of categories where they are assessing the students, so they, the students are assessed within the program.
Okay.
It's just the reward is, is kind of, they have a reward system, we're adding a additional.
And my last question is, I do, I do know that the charter, charter school had a reading program because they had some flagship reading scores that they had improved their students from, like, they moved them, moved the grade levels from very low to very high. And so I do know that they had a program, but again, I am all for helping our students, they are our future, but I just would like to have everybody to have some skin in the game as it relates to public funding.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. And this question is for legal. I would like to go ahead and let the record reflect, I am a Putnam County School District employee. But I do have a question with regards to, if there is a decision that is to be made, will I have to recuse myself from voting? I know I'm able to take part in the conversation and dialogue, but if there is a, this is supposed, if, say, for instance, this is going up for a vote or something of that nature in the future, will I have to recuse myself?
Right, so the quick answer to that is no, you are not benefiting financially. You don't have any pecuniary loss or gain from this decision, but just a reminder to all the commissioners, this is presentation only, no action may be taken, that would be for a later time, this was simply for informational purposes only. But I hope that addresses your question, Commissioner Campbell.
It did, and I wanted to make sure that question was asked on the begin, on the front end, just in case it is to come back before us, that I'm able to move forward accordingly.
Thank you. And to wrap this up, I think that, and this is, I think it's a great concept, great program, and we, as a former teacher, want to help students. But I also think the city, we have a systematic issue where we don't have a policy for anybody from the community seeking funds similar to this, and I think we need to either have a workshop, we need to have that develop or work on that policy first because it continues to happen where we have organizations coming forward, requesting some money from the city, and we don't have a policy or process as to how to address that.
We'll have a draft policy for your consideration at the next meeting. Thank you.
We, we, we do have one as it relates to agencies coming to ask for money. When Don, Don Holm were here as a city attorney, he helped put that together. The other key thing that I was trying to push at the time was that we want to make sure that we want the organization, agencies to not have this on their every annual budget year, that, that the city will be funding that, and my request was that the city put in funding for things such as this. If it, if it's deemed that it's a, it's a good partnership for that particular program, that we could put it in for one year, and then you have a skip year or whatever, so that it's not looking like that the city is having to fund this program and put this in our budget to have it funded for other agencies. So my request, not at this time, but we can circle back around to it, but every other year or every third year.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you for having me, and I look forward to giving you whatever you need and.
Thank you. On to city manager and administrative reports?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Verbally, just wanted to give an update that we are moving forward with trying to secure signage, so that when people come over the bridge, there is something that says, welcome to Palaca, and that is included in your packet. We are making progress with that. Also letting you know that the lead project is completed, and we'll be submitting the final report to the state of Florida. Unfortunately, we did not find any meters with lead after an extensive job that was done. Also, we are in the midst of making changes within the city organizational chart, and just wanted to give you ups on that, so we'll be completing that very soon. And finally, we're also pursuing the cloud-based phone system per the recommendation of our IT, and in order for the completion of the CGIS, which is the Criminal Justice System Server, to be completed. So we're working with Suncom. And finally, with our system that we're utilizing for the commission meetings, we're in the midst of improving that, we're looking at cameras, we're looking at the sound system, so we don't want you to think that we're not aware, we are aware. And we did finalize installing some cameras in the cemetery, as you had instructed a long time ago. So I wanted you to know that we have been listening and progressing.
Thank you. Um, policy, flexible work schedule, Ms. Jones?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, before you, what's been presented in the packets for your review and to make any additions, are three policies, which currently is our flex policy, three policies that do not exist for the city of Palaca, a flexible schedule policy, a remote work policy, as well as a comp policy for our exempt employees. First, I would like to just discuss the flex work policy, is a policy that, just listening to the employees and wanting a work-life balance, to be able to give our employees either time to have a day off, work tens or come in at different hours, as long as all of the work schedules are being covered. So that's something that's in there for your review to see if that's something that you would like. It's also a good recruiting tool, as well as a retention tool, to keep our employees. The comp exempt time policy off is for our employees, that we have employees that are required at certain times, you know, our commission meetings may go long, along with other meetings, that they're required to do during a normal work week. So for those hours that they're putting in fifty, maybe fifty-two, fifty-three hours a week, just to allow them to have comp time, so at another time, they would be able to take that time off. And not to be paid, but to be, to be able to take that additional time off, to also, for the salary exempt employees, to have a work-life balance. Some of them have to work with times they would be rather be scheduled to have time with their kids at a game or whatever, but that would just, that's something up for your consideration, if it's something that you would like to implement to help the salary exempt employees. The remote work policy, we do not currently have anything in place. However, there have come up times where we have employees that do need to work remote for whatever because they're unable to come into the office, but they do have the capability of working remote. That's a policy that also I have put before you all, that would require approval from the supervisor for an extended period, for a period of time, that they would be able to work remotely. So it's not something that you're working two remote days out of a week or that type schedule at the present. This is just for those specific situations, say, an employee is not able, say, they have surgery on a toe, something like that. So they're, they can't walk, they're not to put a lot of pressure, but they are capable of setting up at their house and working and doing, performing their job at home. So their supervisor can authorize them to work for that period of time, be it a week, three, four days remotely, so that they can still participate in the daily activities here at the city.
Thank you. Any questions?
I mean, I, I think what you guys are doing is, is something that has been needed for quite some time anyways as it relates to looking at how you can improve the quality of life for the employees, having that flexible schedules, and also compensating them, not just only with money, but also with flexible time off, and for people having the ability to work from remote if they need to. My, my highest and most, the thing that I'm more some concerned with is making sure that the citizens get what they need. I don't care how you, you, you improve the quality of life for the, for the staff, but I want to make sure that whatever we're doing internally, that the needs of the community are met in conjunction with helping to make the quality of life of staff better, and that's.
Exactly. So with any recommendations that you all may have concerning the policies that we would add into these policies, and if approved, that's one step we would take beginning in our department head meetings to let the department heads know, these are the guidelines, this is what you need to have in place, and these are, and they're all up for review in six months. If something is not working out, then they can pull those policies, those placements of flex schedules at any time. So it's not something that's permanent, once you enter, you stay in, and then you can't, it can be removed.
And maybe, maybe, you know, I know other countries, I know China and also not, and over California, Microsoft, I know all of those companies, some of those companies also have a lot of policies that you have, and also they allow for their employees to take breaks during the day or sleep or whatever, you know, like a take a fifteen, twenty-minute nap or whatever, because a lot of time people are working more than one job and different things, but we need to make sure that the mental health of our employees are in, in, in top shape, in A1 shape, so.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Borm ended with something that I think is very important, the mental health of our employees. In this policy, is there something built in, I know some companies, and I'm not saying that we have to, is there, is there something built in that would allow that to be? You know what? Never mind. I'll get with you directly.
Thank you.
But I do have, I do have additional, with regards to the work-home component and the accumulation of the hours that they will get as comp time, I want to make sure that those are clearly identified, because some organizations, you're only allowed to work from home utilizing your comp time. But if that's not something that we're looking to do, that we will be able to allocate at the discretion of HR or whomever makes those decisions, I want to make sure that it's clearly identified what pot they will be dealing in.
And they, the comp time accrued can only be used within that pay period, correct?
Thank you. The way it's written, the comp time has to be used within, I think, two weeks. Not two weeks, I'm sorry, two months. They can only accumulate forty hours within a month, which is probably not going to happen, so it's not like they can drag it on. And it also states that if an employee were to leave and have comp time for my salary exempt, it's not payable.
Okay, and I, I think I just want, whatever that timeframe is, that there's a timeframe that you must.
And you all can adjust that timeframe of accumulation of how, you know, how long or anything. Give me all the feedback, and I'll bring it back with all of the corrections or adjustments or changes that, that is at the desire of the commission.
Thank you.
Okay, and I was asking for clarification, if you're seeking recommendation or approval today, it sounds like you're seeking feedback and recommendation for the next agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so if you could please.
Information into Ms. Jones before.
Ideally by next week.
Yes, because of the agenda, dropped by that fix Friday, the agenda will be.
Can I ask, Portia?
Go ahead, sure.
Ms. Jones, could you provide a, another municipality that is doing this type of proj, project or program for their exempt employees, and so that we could actually have it as a tool to use? I mean, not a company, a municipality. I know we are service-oriented, and we provide services to the community, and I'd just like to see what type of jobs would actually be a work from home. What example would you give me on that? I mean, I know because a police officer couldn't work from home.
All employees will not be able to work from homes.
So what, what, I know what exempt mean.
Okay.
Specifically, what, all director levels and above, is that what you're saying?
That's our exempt employees, that are salary exempt employees. So if any regular employee shouldn't be, don't have the capability of working from home, but a hourly employee that can work from home with the approval of their supervisor for, like the scenario that I expressed to you. The, I think the salary exempt part is what I'm talking about for comp purposes. That's not the work from home. The work, the remote work from home is just for specific instances that we don't have anything written and guidelines to go by. For an employee that needs to work remotely from home for a period of time, whether it's a medical or for whatever. So, and that has to be approved by the supervisor.
Yes, I, I would like to see that as requested, because I'm quite sure you're pulling it from somewhere else anyway. But, but you, could you forward that information?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you. Financial report, December twenty twenty-four, Ms. Cotty?
That's okay with the Commissioners and Mayor and so forth, that I present from here, financial report. While she's bringing that up, I'll at least start that, our annual budget is seventy-six million. And our actual year-to-date revenues, twelve million five hundred nineteen for the city as a whole. You with me almost? Okay, and our actual expenditures for the city for these three months, six million eight hundred eighty-two thousand, so as of December, we actually have more revenue. You can make it larger place than expenditures, right? So even though that looks kind of great, however, in the second quarter, we're going to start spending a lot more money because we'll be working, we're currently working on grant projects. A lot of expenditures really gets started more in January, which is our fourth month. The new positions, as you can see, are now being brought on, onboard as well. So we do not expect to have such a large revenue after expenditures, but we do as of the end of December. The airport budget or airport fund, which is an enterprise fund, the actual revenue is five hundred twenty-two thousand, and it did operate with a net positive result of three hundred thirty thousand. If you were to move down to the next page, please. Our general fund, it's, well, let's look at golf course, that, that's operating also with a net plus of nineteen thousand. If you roll a little bit further, we'll see that general fund, which is our larger fund, we are at a profit there, or revenues are more than the expenses in the amount of three million. However, as I mentioned, in January, which is this month, we are spending a lot more funds because the grants are being actualized. Third page, please, next page. So looking at better place, so all of the funds at this moment are pretty much operating at a positive amount, and so this is our first three months, you can move on. And that is a positive beginning, even our utility funds is operating with a plus of a million. And again, when, when we see the next three months, it's going to be different. We are considering hoping to move to monthly reporting, monthly detailed accounting to the Commissioners, and so that way we would be able to see it as it's occurring. Move to the next page, please. And so this is graphic, just at a glance, it lets you see our general fund, actual revenues. You can see that big blue and that large blue is general fund, property taxes. So for this moment, that's another reason why we have so much revenue left over because we received the bulk of the property taxes, a lot of it in that first quarter. And as we live, we receive less monies for property tax. Yes, sir?
Is it any reason why we, we, we don't get it monthly? Because generally,
we, we should be kept abreast of how those expenditures are happening on that basis so that we know how the city is operating, especially if we're responsible for the budget. We approve the budget. We should know how everything is operating from everything to everything. So I think monthly would be what I've been pushing for, for since I've been here. So I, I would like to see the commission to have, have those reports monthly.
Yes.
Receiving them and then they stopped.
Right. So we got, we gotta keep them rolling month.
And, and we do actually prepare it monthly. So that's not a hardship.
Yeah, no, no, the, those, the reports, the commission, they, we need those monthly so we know how the cities are. We shouldn't have to ask how the city or get surprised, you know, either way, whether it's a plus or minus.
Exactly. So that will happen starting our next month as requested. And, and the reason why you are, you have been receiving it quarterly, that's how it was. But I have no problem with changing immediately to monthly. Can we go to the next slide, please? And that's a citywide actual. So again, it's letting you see that the bulk of the revenues are at this moment coming from our general fund. But then as we live on, we'll see that more funds are coming in with our utilities, sanitation, water and wastewater. One more slide, I believe. That's looking at citywide. So it makes sense that citywide actual expenses, our larger amount is also general fund and then second to general fund is utilities. And finally, our last slide. So here I try to keep us aware of our reserve budget and how we're spending. If we're staying in line, there is a requirement, Government Finance Officer Association. It says that we need to be certain that our reserves are at a minimum of sixteen point seven percent and we're currently twenty-three point six percent for general fund, which is specifically where that requirement is. Okay? And the rest of the presentation is detailed monthly, which going forward, you will receive this on a monthly basis.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Yes, well.
Um, for the ARPA fund, can you scroll back up to ARPA?
Yes.
And tax increment? And can you explain then?
That's small. The opera. Okay. So for the offer of fun, that's where we have encombed the one point five million. And ARPA is slightly different in the sense that we already have the funds sitting here and we just simply need to spend it. So as of the end of December, for those three months, we did spend twenty-eight thousand. And what I need to do here is recognize the balance of that twenty-three thousand as revenue as well. So ultimately it's going to be zero, to be real.
Thank you. And can you also, the tax increment?
Oh, the TIF, okay. So with the TIF fund, that is the monies that we receive from the county for the property taxes and the portion that belongs to the CRA slash TIF fund. So as of the end of December, the funds had not yet been received. However, it is accrued. And so because we do not receive those funds until more like the first of January. So as of the end of December thirty-one, I can't really see that number. Well, but I believe it's like two hundred sixteen.
Two sixty.
Yeah, two hundred sixty-five thousand, six twenty-seven. We had actually spent our accrual and, and that was straight accrual was two hundred sixty-three thousand. When this, when the funds, matter of fact, while I was sitting here, I was interacting with finance. And as of today, we have received almost six hundred thousand of our TIF money in January. Okay?
I just want to clarify, the monthly reporting that you'll be doing in the meetings going forward will be the summary of budgeted versus actuals.
It was.
Just like this, but for monthly. I heard you say detail and we can get that, but again, for presentation purposes, I want to make sure we have a summary.
We will.
Thank you.
And not only that, if we can put that back up, please. If you would, so I can clarify what you're saying. All right. So this is a snapshot. And if you wanted to understand what is the support for that snapshot, it's like all of this, right? So the snapshot, I'm going to be revising that somewhat by still keeping that annual budget there, but I'm going to add year-to-date budget. So that, that way, when you're glancing at it, you, you still stay alert to what the annual budget is, the seventy-six million. But by fund, it'll be broken out also year-to-date budget versus year-to-date actual. And it will become much more, I think, relevant. Additionally, I'm going to break it out where it's not like this. I want to do it per page, per fine. And it'll make it easier for interpretation. Okay?
Thank you. For the questions. Did you have a question, Commissioner Borm?
The.
We're just in the phase of continual improvement and I'm happy to, to even keep doing this because I think the more that, as you pointed out, Commissioner, that our commissioners get prompt information, timely information, the better you can make decisions. So thank you for giving me the freedom.
Thank you.
To make it better.
Public Works Department presentation.
Hi.
Ms. Burekio, good evening.
Everybody, I got a couple of presentations I have to go over with you guys tonight, one of them being where we're at with the new facility, how we're progressing with that. And I got a couple of slide shows. I'd like to start with a tour of our current facility. Now, most of you commissioners have seen this one already, but I think for the benefit of Ms. Davis, you can.
Yes, that's what we wanted.
Okay. Well, while she's working on it, I can get into, so the job started over a year and a half ago when they were trying to put this together. We had one respondent to the actual request for proposal, that was Shear Construction. Now, they started working on the proposal. The commissioner approved a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for design build presentation from them in August of twenty-three. And July of last year was the last actual correspondence we had with Shear Construction. They told us at that point that they needed an additional fifty thousand dollars to complete the project that they had told us originally is only going to be X amount of dollars. At that point, some of the ex-employees for the city had left the city. They were the last ones to have contact with them and we could not get them to respond to anything at all since then. Several months later, we went ahead, we sent a legal letter over to Shear stating that if you did not contact us, we didn't come to some sort of agreement that we were going to sever the contract and would move forward. That's where we are right now. We have severed a contract with them and we are moving forward. Pacero is the city engineering firm that works with us and for us has given us a number to go ahead and give us one hundred percent drawings. Their, their number is one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars to do the design drawing, which is three thousand less than the approved through the commission amount. I'm actually seeking guidance that I can pursue this after this. And they're, from the time that we approve and give them a PO, we're looking at about four to six months for them to do the drawings, to give us complete drawings that we can put out and actually get the job started. So we're, we're excited to try to get things finally moving again. So with that, that's public works updating, okay? Well, we can run through this too. If we, that's fine if it's up.
Yes. So, so going to do the designs to pass Pacero and then put it out to bid for build.
That is correct. So we need a hundred percent drawings in order for them. What they'll do is give us an actual cost for construction along with the bid. So we know about where we're at. So we have very strict budget here with this building. So they're, one of their main goals is to make sure that they stay within that, that scope. So they'll, they'll meet with us, we'll go over things and we have to remove some things from the drawing. You know, we're, we're going to try, we're going to, not going to try, we're going to make this work. We are absolutely going to make it work and they are committed to making this work within our budget as well.
So there's not opportunity to have a design bill, someone to do the design in the bill?
Well, we only had one respondent for, to do the whole package and that was Shear Construction. So, and they.
So why not send it back out for a design bill?
Well, we, we could, we could put it back out. So of course we can. That would prolong, it'd take a few more months to get that put together, but yes, sir, of course we could.
So therefore, you know, whoever the designer is going to also be the builder and maybe it'd be more appealing. I'm just thinking of how to move the project alone and I don't know what commission thing about it, but.
I'm a, I'm a big proponent of, once we get the prints, we put it out the bid because then you're getting several different opinions of what it's going to cost and how they could do it within the scope of work. So design build is going to design it and then build it. Understood. I understand what you're saying. But we didn't get any other respondents to the last one. So there's not a lot of companies out there that are capable of doing it. I'm sure we could say.
So was the last one, was the last RFP was for design bill? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, sir.
Right. And that was the company that ended up, it didn't work out, obviously, as we discovered. And I think for the sake of moving on, we need to move on.
Question.
Of course.
How do we handle companies that does that in terms of we've engaged with, I think we paid a portion of the funds, right?
We have paid zero dollars to them, sir, as of then.
All right. But so how do we handle companies that are vendors that does business with the city like that?
Right. Well, we, we went through, we get with legal. Legal puts out a letter stating that if we don't respond within thirty days, fifteen days, whatever, what it is, and if they don't respond, it's clearly, that severs the contract. So they, if they're not going to say anything at all, that's.
And I'm sure that's kept in mind the next time an RFP goes out for a similar thing that this company, it's not reliable, frankly.
Right.
I understand. So that, that's, and that's what my point is. We need to make sure that those individuals or people who treat the city in that manner, that they're not eligible for contracts to work with the city. If they want to sever it, we're going to sever it all the way.
Absolutely. Yeah. I don't think we'd put them on another block and take that risk. Absolutely. Great.
Presentation.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So this is a, a public works city. Like I said, this is recycled. We're, we're just going to run through it and just to, to get a feel for it. Things haven't gotten much better. If anything, they deteriorated a bit. So if we go to the next slide, please. Portions of our office were conducted or built back in nineteen forty-seven. Many reservations after that have been done by our people. We built a small shed on the back of the office, turned that into an office, so on and so forth. And that's how we came up with what we have today. Next slide, please. That's storage and the bathroom area right there. That's another bathroom, which I, I have to point out that they're just, it's not ADA at all. There's, we couldn't service anybody with any kind of needs in this building whatsoever. So go ahead, next slide, please. That is a overall of the offices, the rendering is fourteen hundred square foot. We have eight admin staff currently who occupy the facility. We can only seat six staff. So we kind of get people and we share computers and, you know, they can only be in there one at a time. And of course, the ADA. Next slide, please. The largest fleets, which are all our garbage trucks, cannot be worked on inside the facility. Anytime we have to do anything other than change oil or something simple under the hood, we have to slide the truck outside and the guys work on the ground outside, which is a dirt ground, incidentally. And anytime they have to get a tool or something different, it's, it's a hundred sixty feet there and back to go get a tool. So you're talking, you start talking about efficiency and time, you know, a thirty-minute fix turns into a four-hour fix. Next slide, please.
In the climate where it's, it's either super hot or super cold or.
It's one of the two. Yeah. And they're, they're, they're rough right now. It's been pretty, pretty bad. And that's just a shot of them outside, having to work outside. That's another shot. You're okay. That's the oil pit, which most of our vehicles can't even fit on anyway. It's only a couple of trucks that we can utilize and that's in the existing facility. Next slide, please. And that's where, this is where we service our larger equipment, our backhoes, trackhoes, dump trucks and so on and so forth. That's really all we have for it. And you can't even get the vehicles into this area because most of them are too big. They don't fit underneath. Next slide, please. That's the guys outside working on some things. That's our break room. There's forty-one positions. We're currently at forty-three positions. We, we employ twenty-eight percent of the staff in the city. And that is our break room. And right through that door is a changing room. They come in, they clock in and out. That's really our only common space for our guys to take break or to do anything changed at the end of the day. We have no showering facilities. We are a refuse company. You'd think at the end of the day, it'd be nice to have something like that. Next slide, please. That is the changing room. That's a old barn. It was moved over from Hank Bryan Park back in the seventies and put over here. It's not a very secure building. We, we have it as secure as we can get it. It's waterproof, but that's where we house most of our parts, our expensive parts, our copper parts, things of that nature inside that building. The restrooms are located right to the right there. If you see them in the next slide. That's the restrooms. Next slide, please. That's a non-functioning shower, but that's attached to the restrooms as well. Next slide, please. Okay. So that's a pole barn that we have where we keep out, you know, the heavy stuff that can't be picked up and walked away with. If you look, you'll see some holes in the roof and you think, hey, why don't we just fix that? Well, the truss system is rotting, so we can't even screw off the truss system anymore. So unless we refurbish, replace all the trusses, it's, it's pretty much stuck as it is. We just move things around to avoid getting damaged. Next slide, please. As you can see, our vehicles do not fit under there. So they always sit halfway out into the yard. Next slide, please. Everybody here, all of our departments from streets, facilities, stormwater, maintenance, everybody, we share about twelve hundred square foot of storage space, which is not even close to enough space. If you go to the next slide, please. As you can see, cram everything in where we can. Next slide, please. Small tool shop and storage is just, we, we've outgrown it years ago and there's just not enough space in there. Some of the vehicles parked underneath, that's where the old animals, rescue people used to be in the back there. We utilize that building the best we can. If you look at that, the whole site is dirt. So anytime a wind kicks up or something, all our vehicles get covered in dirt on a daily. Not only does that make it tough to keep us looking good like we should on a regular basis, but it also damages our vehicles tremendously, gets up into everything and it's a, it's a constant battle for us back there. And there's only one way into this area, one way in, one way out. So we have to go in, all the trucks have to do three-point turns just to get back out the way we park and everything. You know, we've, we've made it work, but it, it's very difficult. It's not very efficient. Next slide, please. That is an overhead of the property. Now, as so many people may remember, have been in Placca for many, many years. This is the old dump. Okay. This is the old city dump back here. And if you look at building F, that was the original offices and everything else was built on and just grown all by city personnel, no professional contractors. So nothing's insulated properly, nothing. It's, it's, it's kind of rough shape. Next slide, please. Okay. Now, you can go on to the next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay. I had a couple of photos that I attached to it. Could you bring up any one of those photos, please? No, I should, there should be three photos of the new facility. They were just separate photos that were attached. Thank you. So that is the, the new facility that we're going to try to build within the facility that's existing out there in the airport. Included that and we'll send them over an email again. So you guys have them to, to look at them again. But this was the best use of our space. Several minds got together and did this, this from Public Works and some of the ex-employees who worked here put a lot of work into putting this together to make it as efficient and, well, economical, quite simply, the best we could. There'll be nine-foot ceilings throughout. That is the overhead. That is the, the lot. So you could see if the, follow that yellow line, we have an in and an out through the back. So our vehicles can flow straight through in and out, just making it more efficient, fueling stations, cleaning stations, just all things that we, we need to upgrade and update. Next one, is there another one? Should be a third one, I thought. Yeah, that's the, the hundred fifty thousand square foot building, the storage building. So what we did is to try to reduce costs. We're not building walls. We're putting up fences. We need to separate, you know, parts and pieces. We don't want one people going over and just grabbing some hoses and anything. So we, we're putting up eight-foot fences throughout that whole building to try to cut back on costs. It's one of the things we were trying to do to reduce our costs, to keep us within our budgetary restraints. And that's basically it for that. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
As far as the new facility.
I think a picture say a thousand words. I mean, it's pretty obvious.
Nineteen forty-seven, so it's way beyond its useful life. So that certainly don't.
Nineteen forty-seven, so it's way beyond its useful life, so that certainly don't fit today's uh, needs. But um, but uh, again, that your design there, is it something that are you sacrificing to just to, okay, so you, are you selling for this? Or is it something that you desire to have to make it work for you from an efficiency and effect, and, and, and effective standpoint?
Efficiency and effective is exactly what we went for. We did realize going into it, with the very first drawing, you know, had giant chandeliers, you know, two stories escalators. But reality, we, we went in from the standpoint that we knew we were, we needed to keep it within that budget, right? And we knew also that, hey, this might be too much. So, we, we went in with the ideas, okay, we could take this out, we could take this out, we could take this out. But we're quite satisfied with what's left. Um, and once, if you allow us to, Pacero gets through into the drawings, they're gonna meet out with us. They, they wanna meet as early as next, next week with me to walk the properties and then look at some things. And there are still some options and things that we can remove. We are a facilities maintenance. I mean, if we gotta go in there and we need to gut the place ourselves, save fifty thousand, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna do everything we can as far as the city goes to save every penny we can to make this happen. It's, it's really important to us. It's, it's very, very needed situation for Public Works.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell has when you're done.
Yeah, sir, I wasn't, wasn't, I was, I wasn't finished.
Okay, I said when you're done, that's why I said that.
That's a brownfield area, if it used to be like a dump, right? It used to be a dump and it never got did they ever get cleaned, uh, to the, to the point to where everything, because it could be funding out there and available for that site to be able to assist maybe with some of the uh, needed improvements.
I, 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 there was a lot of trash out there. It was cleaned up a lot, but then a lot of stuff was buried. Um, they do that, that's a very typical way of, of dealing with the refuse in certain, certain areas. The um, I'm not sure exactly what the future holds for that property. I know that Mr. Cutwright had originally, they had a plan to have a third ballpark there and add on to Booker, which is a great idea in my opinion. That's just utilize that, make that part bigger back there and better. Um, but it, it's ready for that. It, it is in a position where we could do that without any additional, you know, digging up, trying to remove more trash. So, we've probably got about three or four feet of dirt on top of anything that was ever done there in the back area, so.
Thank you.
And if I may add, the budget that he keeps referring to is based upon that original three million dollars where we did the purchase of the property, which was one point six million, so one point six two four. So, that's what we have sitting in reserve, that one point three million. And that is the limitation that we have given to the uh, engineers.
That is correct. And Pacero, they are our engineers, so their, their concerns are our concerns. That's why I'm really trying to see if we can move forward with them in this direction. I think we're gonna get a better product at this point for that.
Commissioner Campbell?
The last uh, three comments that was made uh, by Joe, by Eric Miss Carty and by Commissioner Borm answered my questions. Uh, we, every time I see this presentation, I get a little angry because we should be farther than what we are with this whole project. This project, I remember if I recall right, the last time we saw this presentation was over a year, probably two years ago. We spoke to the urgency of trying to get this uh, situation rectified. There should be no reason why any of our city employees are working in conditions in which they are working in. I remember when uh, Ms. Deborah Robinson was there in HR, she per, she walked through and was disgusted and personally went out and bought some stuff for the area. I know there was a refrigerator and just small stuff of that nature. And if you hear Joe when he says it hadn't gotten any better, it's only gotten worse. So I think this is something that we need to go ahead and apply some pressure to, whatever pressure we can apply, to go ahead and get this done. Because again, no citizen, no city employee should be working in those applicable conditions.
Thank you, sir, I agree.
And, and it took a collaborative effort of uh, Public Works, legal, uh, our engineer and myself as a group to even get us where we are now. So it took a lot of effort to get to where we are at this moment, where we now can say we will be progressing.
And I think we need to progress the most expedient manner possible, and I trust the judgment of city staff to make those calls. And if it, if it's to have Pacero and company provide the drawings and then put it out to bid for construction, then that makes sense to me versus starting over again completely.
I would like to see this be something that comes and stays before the commission. I know we often say with things that are pressing or things that, I, I, I say it all the time, we talk about things when they're hot, but when they're no longer hot, we kind of push them onto the back burner until there's something like this again. I want this to be something that we keep at the forefront, because these are our employees working in those conditions. So, I asked, as the request of me, that this be something that is at least brought to us once a month, if not every meeting with an update.
And to, uh, again, thi- this was uh, brought back up back when we was talking about the airport property to swap during that time, because this did uh, go cold and I, and I, and I, I brought it up during that time because it had went um, cold. And um, so here we are, we went from one point five million uh, initially the bill. And then uh, it was brought back to the commission, a new commission in twenty twenty to uh, press before the commission at seven, seven million and we, 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 we knocked it down because that was not certainly appropriate for the commission to approve something of that magnitude. Uh, because from one point five to seven million, and so we agreed on the three million and we moved forward with, with the three million bill. And so at during those time periods, it did uh, grow cold. So, brought it back up again during the land swap uh, of the airport. And so, that's why we're gonna continuously keep this before, stay on the uh, agenda, keep it on the agenda. And um, so don't let that fall off the agenda.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion on this topic? Onto water, water and wastewater and asset management.
Well, I have one more slideshow.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's just, it's just, we'll run through it if you can bring up my other slideshow.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. That is it. Alright, so the public works update, just to let you guys know what we've been up to here and what we're, what we have coming up. So, uh, matters, Madison Street, uh, water main replacement update. I, I just think this was important. So everybody knows that we are on track with this project. Um, the contractors working between Sixth and Eleventh Street, primarily on the south side of the street. I know it helps, we had some um, underground infrastructure that was in the way, so we had to re-engineer a couple things, but these guys are out there and they're crushing it, they're on track, they're within budget and everything looks good. We are out there every day watching these guys. Um, they're doing a great job. Um, DB Civil has done other projects for the city. They do quite well. Um, so, everything is running smooth with that project. Uh, street signs and pet, pet waste. Okay, so, street sign thing. We are, currently have a active project going, which we affectionately call, show us a sign. Because we're trying to get every sign in the city replaced. Now, we have started working in certain areas of the city, you'll see. But what we're doing at this point is, we're doing whole sections of, you know, one giant section. Our, our first section that we're gonna be working is around Hank Bryan Park, all the way from St. John's up to Krill. We want every street labeled, we want every stop sign up and straight and new. Um, so, they've already been ordered for that particular area, they're being manufactured. And we have found a better sign-making manufacturing company who can give us dates and tell us when they're gonna be done at a better price, sir. Um, and we're excited about this because it's, it's just something that's needed to be done for such a long time and we are progressing forward with it uh, well. Um, we're also doing the um, petway stations. We're starting down at the riverfront. Now, we had to stop because of the weather. Um, cool weather, the concrete doesn't set, but I promise you, we have fifty of these things. We're putting them in every single park in the city. And we are gonna blow through these once we can actually get to, to working on them with the concrete. Oh, let me also add, um, when we do an area in the city with the signs, um, the problem with the, Florida, the signs, we can't put them in concrete because they have to flex if somebody hits them. There's, there's certain guidelines that we have to follow by. So what happens when we put new signs in, you'll see us, we'll do a whole area and you're gonna drive by three days later and there's a sign at an angle. We have to touch those signs three times.
Wow.
Before they're, they'll start setting in and getting better. So I just want everybody to just be a little patient with us. We are aware, we're driving every day to be watching and staying on top of these things. But we do have them where we have to come back, let them sit for two weeks and come back and reset them and, and pound them in. So, it is a process, just bear with us, but everybody's gonna benefit from this. The city's gonna look great. We're really excited about doing that. Uh, same with the past petway stations, that's gonna be, you know, something that we've never had here, but it's, we're excited about that as well. Um, welcome additions, Public Works Fleet. Thank you, folks, for allowing us to do this. Um, if you look at the top picture, that is the F three fifty. Um, this is a kind of a first for us. It allows us to bring our shop to down vehicles. Um, we can serve some on the spot and get them right back into service. Um, you would think something as easy as changing a tire. Well, those tires with steel rims on them weigh almost three hundred pounds. It takes two people to get them on the back of a truck. We now have a boom crane that can lift up to two thousand pounds. That's why we did a small example with the uh, the guys out there and, and a tire. Um, it also has a compressor, an air compressor, eighty, eighty gallon air compressor, thirty gallon air compressor, I'm sorry. But a hundred and seventy-five PSI, meaning it's strong enough to do whatever we need. So, this is, this is awesome. You'll see the truck out and about and, and at all hours of the day. Um, next slide, please. Uh, there's just some action shots of the guys doing their things. Um, in the last six months, just so everybody knows, we, we have completed twelve hundred and fifty work orders, which is, it's, it's quite a task um, to, to maintain and stay on top of that. And that means closed-out work orders completed and done. Um, our team, if you look at the pictures, hundred and ten percent, they go above beyond all time. Look at this guy, they're in the water. They're, they're trying to fix the, get a water line back up and they, they get in and it's, it's, it's crazy what these guys do for our citizens and for the city. They, they love, they love their jobs, they love the city. It's, it's, it's really something. Um, and we have a, a great safety record. Um, zero percent workman's compensation claims. We don't, we, I am so proud of that, so proud of these boys and they, they go out there, they look out for each other. And, and, and overall, our seven departments that we're currently running, and we are one, we are one team, we, we are a family and we truly are out there. We, we strive for perfection, but we accept nothing less than excellent in everything we do. Um, and it's just, I, I shout out, it's not me, it's them every day. I'm proud of my crew every day. So, wanted to put that in there. Uh, next slide, please. Okay.
Can I just make a comment? Joe, I wanna give commendation to you and your team. And it's great seeing this bright spot in your bleak working environment. And I just wanna say thank you guys very much. And you know that you are a priority, as the commissioners have said. So, we will see this through to the end. You're welcome.
I certainly wanna uh, echo that same sentiment and um, thank you guys for all you do day in and day out. Uh, and it, it's a true testament as it relates to twelve hundred and fifty, uh, work orders that you guys worked through. Um, and you say zero incidents, uh, making sure that you guys have all of the equipment. Don't knock on wood. Yeah, uh, so, so you, you have all the um, safety equipment you need in order to do your job and making sure that you're following the safety protocols, because even though we're out there, we're getting the jobs done, we wanna do them in the, the safest way. The way people came into work, they need to go home in that same manner. And um, safety is the top priority and we talked about uh, the insurance risk rating or whatever. Uh, we wanna make sure that those numbers look good across the, a whole spectrum of the city as it relates to people doing some of the things like you're doing and that need to uh, uh, manifest itself across all the departments.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you to the Public Works team. I don't have to reiterate what everybody said. We surely appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay.
Water and wastewater asset management progress report?
Yes, hi, uh, Mr. Brian. If you take some time, the only reason why I put this on here is because um, we have not done this since two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
Okay, and um, we now are actively doing it and I'd like you to explain it better, please.
Um, good evening. So what this is, is um, FRWA, they come out and did um, an assessment of our, our assets. For our water, wastewater, water and sewer. They came out and like Ms. Kirk, the city manager said it was back in two thousand sixteen. They come out with a um, a file, a big book of, of, of things, they, their opinions or things that we need to do for our assets. Um, it's laid dormant for a, a long time on their side. They're actively pushing now to um, see where we're at with what they looked at two thousand sixteen. Um, the onus on us is that um, we apply for SRF funding and there's a big push that the people that give us this money for SRF wanna know that we're spending it correctly and properly. Um, they don't want people asking for ten million dollars or coming back in two years asking for another ten million dollars for repairs or something they just built. So, they're, they contacted with FRWA to come out and, and make sure we're spending the money that we get properly. So, it was, it was a lot of work. It was, it was an old book, it's outdated, it's eight years old. Uh, we're going through the book and we're updating names and mistakes that was in the book and things that we've done that's been corrected already and some things that still need to be done. It's a work in progress. It's, it's a work in progress. Um, and we're diligently working on this. Uh, we have some questions we have to answer to them. Um, and in the end, it's gonna be an updated book and it's gonna just show us things that we may need to focus on in the city, just to keep our assets solid.
And if I may add, I mean, we have how many manholes and how many, I mean, we have the eight hundred, we have five hundred thirty-two. You know, we have another six hundred something, so it's a, it's a huge number. And um, I believe that we were able to have, uh, Mr. Joe didn't uh, we have a commitment that they're gonna really go out there and do that assessment with our assistance, right?
They're gonna start the next month doing the assessment of all the real tangible things, valves, water, manholes. They're gonna come out and get hydrants and we're, we're gonna help them, we're gonna assist them with that. Um, with it is, by doing this, it assists us in future um, grants and things of that nature. Yeah, it's, it's really a, a good thing for us to do and it shows our city's strength.
And it's updating our GIS.
That's right. All the information, that's a great point, thank you. Uh, we, we're putting into our GIS system, which we will have a computer map. We can stand over a valve and go, hey, there's a valve right here, and it will show that valve and that's three feet eight, you know, it's, it's pretty.
So there's no surprises in the future.
No, man, moving us right to the future. This is definitely something that's pretty amazing and they're assisting us with all that. It's, it's a good deal.
Great.
Thank you. We just wanted to give you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, um, can I just ask a question really quickly? Brian, the um, plan that you said you guys are updating, you're working on currently updating it, that it hasn't been updated in eight years. Um, the FRWA, they actually provide assistance with updating that? Is, is that true? Do you guys have support in getting that updated?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We had a, a meeting last week, there was only maybe six, five, six members.
Excellent. Okay, alright, just checking resources. Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to open the floor to public comments. Please limit your public comments to three minutes. Pe- please be polite and respectful and give your name and city or town of residence. Vicki Duke.
Vicki Duke, Palaca, Florida. Um, at our last meeting, I came and asked some questions about the um, intersections where the bricks were and the fact that they were still um, nasty looking to me and that we needed something in place to protect the things that we improve as we go forward. Well, it ha- they have been cleaned. They look a lot better. I talked with Joe after our meeting and he informed me that some had been cleaned. I'd been downtown shopping for Christmas and that's when I noticed that it still looked bad. But um, I went back and yes, they had been improved a lot. And um, one of the business owners came out and talked to me and said, well, there's still gravel, you know, here that hadn't been put back. And I said, well, that had to be moved to clean the bricks. And that um, that I'd been assured that they were gonna come back and sweep those back in the place. And he was concerned about the next rainstorm and getting washed down in the drain. But I assured him that Joe had said that that was the next step, they'd be doing that. I was disappointed that the contractor that should have been cleaning it, didn't clean it. That we had hired, the city had to hire Sunshine Cleaning to actually clean those bricks. And I'm, I'm assuming that the city's gonna end up paying that, not the contractor that should have cleaned them. But moving forward. But moving forward, I want our city items to be protected. But I appreciate that the city's saying, well, they're not going to get it cleaned. And Joe taking the initiative to go ahead and Sunshine had done business with us and was good for us. And they stepped in and took care of that. And I was assuming the rocks of that for this bad weather, that may not have happened. And then the other thing was pleased to see on Channel Four, the MLK Parade had it on the news. I thought it had gotten canceled. I knew the one in Jacksonville had gotten canceled. And then when I looked under Business Putnam County Chamber dot com, the poster that was there said it was going to start on Fourth Street going down to the riverfront. The events would be at the riverfront. So I went down to the riverfront. I just didn't think I was capable of walking in that weather. And I didn't see anything. I said, okay, it got canceled. So I'll watch for when it's rescheduled. But I was pleased that night I saw it on Channel Four and I was glad that we were highlighted on there for our parade. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mr. Vickers, is he still here? Or did he leave? Is he outside? Okay. Ms. Given, I mean, Mr. Newfeld, I'm sorry, Mr. One Con. He left too. Okay. Ms. Givens.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Administrative, got to be quick because I got a few questions. All right. What do I need to do as far as the city's policy and procedures as far as having lights either fixed or turned on on the north side and like the West Street area, north side areas surrounding that street over to Madison and over to Napoleon Street. Also, there are some nonprofit organizations that would like to come to Palaca and help the residents. I need to know what's the policy and procedures or introducing those nonprofit organizations to the city commission so that they can come in and start helping. Number three, March nineteenth through the twentieth is the Royal County's Day. I would like to know how do we take children from the city, citizens here and adults that would like to participate. I'd like to get some information on that. And then I'd like to jump to July nineteen, twenty twenty-four. I requested a public records request from Attorney West and I would like to share that information with you concerning the city's code of conduct. It says, general statement, this code, this code of conduct applies to all employees in city service. Employees violating these provisions or any provision contained in these policies may be subject to disciplinary action up to and including termination. All employees are expected to remember they are public service employees and to conduct themselves according to the following. Employees' responsibility for personnel policies. All employees are responsible for becoming aware and familiar with the policies and procedures which govern their employment with the city. All employees are expected to report immediately to their supervisor any and all suspected violations of these policies or of any city regulation. Regulation. Fair to do so may subject the employee to disciplinary action, conflict of interest. City employees who may be in a position to influence city decisions shall refrain from relationships which may adversely affect their judgment in dealing with city suppliers or goods and services or with other public agencies. Any outside personnel or business slash economic relationship which affords present or future financial benefits to an employee and employee family or to individuals with whom the employee has business or financial ties may be considered a conflict of interest requiring evaluation by the city manager or designated representative when the employee acts as director, officer, agent, proprietor, partner, stockholder, if owning, and it says ten percent securities outstanding, employee pay consultant or advisor to a city supplier or with other public agencies. The employee is engaged in a private business or financial relationship which may secure advantage of goods, services or influence due to the employee's position with the city. The employee procures or designates sources for procurement of any parts, materials, services, supplies and facilities for the city's purchase of or lease in the employee's name or in the name of others. And this is the last part if I'm able to read it.
Well.
An employee having, an employee having an outside personal or business economic relationship under the conditions specified above shall disclose in a written sworn statement to the city manager as given the nature and scope of the relationship.
Thank you.
Anyway, this is in your code.
Thank you.
If you would, I had a couple of questions.
Thank you. No, we don't do questions. It's just public comment. Thank you right now.
Thank you.
There'll be an opportunity. Is anybody else here for public comment? Seeing no calls, public comment, onto commission and staff response.
HR, would you or address that policy that was sent? Was that an HR policy? That wasn't, that was, is that our policy?
Yeah.
Okay, who's going to address?
There wasn't really a question. It was just, yeah.
She was attempting to ask it for us.
But we can't, and please don't do that from the audience, from the public.
So can, can we just either A, confirm that that is our policy or something?
Yes, that is our policy.
Okay, thank you.
And that we need to adhere to our policy and that would be the other piece of it regardless of what the question is. Our policies. They were also, again, I don't know, Ms. Givens brought up a couple of other issues. Nonprofit organizations have an interest in providing services in the city.
Yes.
And how do they go about that?
I would like to follow up on that. When I get a moment, I will follow up and contact you, if that's okay. But the nonprofit helping the city, correct? And the other one was about Madison. You can, what was the question with that Madison?
The lighting. I think there's the lighting over in that area. I think we talked about that in terms of the new LED lighting LPNL have. It's a program that they have. Chief Shaw is also working on that.
Could you come up, please, Chief Shaw, and explain it? That would be easy, I think.
Yes, ma'am. In relation to the lighting myself, Director Cutright, almost called him Commander Cutright, Director Cutright, Joe and several other departments are working on the Neighborhood Improvement Program is what we discussed previously. Neighborhood Improvement Program, one of the major factors in that program is dealing with the lighting. Right now, the area that we are focusing on and addressing is the north side area. And we are attending meetings and looking at getting those things addressed immediately. One of the things we need to improve on there is just not replacing the lightings, but to improve the lighting. And that's with the new LED lighting. It's going to make it a lot brighter. So we are in a process of reviewing it and addressing it and that we're looking at hoping at getting it done as soon as possible.
So could I ask a question on it?
Yes, you can.
So with that, the funding, where are you looking for the funding from? Could we use actually the AWPA funding? Because that's public safety and health and safety. Would we be able to utilize that or do you have a fund already earmarked for that lighting project?
So no, we don't have a funding earmarked for the lighting program. One of the things that, how it's paid for is FPLE actually charges the cities for those public lights that are on the streetlights. So those are the lights we're looking at addressing on the public factor. The private factor is with those entities such as PHA that need to include like not only on the housing, but in the courtyards as well. So the funding for the public lighting, just to go, we go over it, is done by and funded by the city, the city, billed to the city.
Right. And I know it's been some time ago that we first mentioned those lights in those areas. And, you know, in light of what have taken place and recent events, I think lighting is that first step with Septad, you know, crime prevention through environmental design. And I think that that's, that's going to be a big game changer. We light it up and
I agree totally.
Definitely want to expedite those efforts. I just want to say that.
And that is our, our challenge and our, our mission moving forward is to address the light.
And so if a local funding is an option, as Commissioner Jones suggested, can we look into that, please?
And what I would like to do is look into it and be certain that I can't touch the AWPA because we did do encumbering, et cetera. And I'll also look at the budget itself to see where we do have funds already available that we can pull from.
Thank you.
And I will report back if we can with the next agenda.
Yes, ma'am. And we have a meeting coming up in two weeks that where we can also address, hopefully with FPL and Clay Electric for the areas in our city that we can look to work on getting some kind of cost analysis back to it and where it's going to affect the city.
Thank you.
Because, yeah, I have a request over in, in the area as well. And like I said, if they can't do that within the city's budget, maybe I can probably use some of my funding to help in that regard for the public safety piece. I will, I'm not, I'm not sure it's going to cost over five thousand for a light, but if it, if it does, I'll put forth my allocation that I have in my budget.
Can we use it for that?
If I could.
We can't use it for that.
Well, again, again, I'm, I'm all for public safety and whatever I can use, I will use and we're going to, we're going to look for some funding.
I'm going to identify the funding. Just give me an opportunity.
Commissioner Borm, if you would, I asked if you could send me that location. I know there's been a location we talked about previous. If it's not the same, okay, never mind. We've already looked into that and we'll have the cost and recommendations for that because we provided.
And is it the same that the citizen has brought up?
That is correct. It's one we've talked about in the past.
All right, cool. Thank you.
I'll go ahead, Commissioner Campbell.
When we have these meetings with the different lighting organizations, I think it'll be to the benefit or prior to some of those meetings to have public input. I know that the police department, they are out in the community, but I think sometimes citizens have locations that are within the city that may not have come up in question that definitely could utilize better lighting in the system. So I think that we should, I don't know if we can create some kind of document or get with Peter Public Information to have where citizens can submit areas. Or is that something that is already in place? If so, how does a citizen go about, go about making and not a request, but making an area come to light that may not be up for consideration?
Website.
So we do have a process in place as it stands right now, Commissioner. I do agree that we need to do probably a little better job of getting that information out and advertising it so that the citizens know how to go about utilizing and, and reporting that information. And it is via the website. You would have to basically notify the, either the city manager or Public Works. We then go out as the police department, not only to do a survey and assess the area, we then report back and notify them of what the current status is and if it needs to be addressed and upgraded. From there, we contact the electric company, whether it be FPL or Clay Electric, and we look at getting those issues upgraded or replaced.
And currently on our website, we have, you can just hit the tab where it says, report violations. And we can report it there as well, the citizen.
So again, I think the only piece to add to Commissioner Campbell is are people aware that's on our website, that they can go there and do this.
We'll start communicating more. Thank you. Good point.
I mean, and I'm, I'm not trying to be a pain, but can we make it? Your website is very user friendly, but can we make it to where it specifically says lighting request or something? Because again, you'll have citizens who, oh, I don't see it. I don't, we, I want to, I want to make this as clear as possible. You want to make sure that everyone has the same opportunity. Everyone may not have access to the website, so we need to come up with some additional solution so that we can combat all of this. Because again, there are some areas that may not be up for consideration that may need to be considered when we go into these conversations so that we're not going in with bits and pieces, but going, going in with a more comprehensive plan or comprehensive request when we're talking to these companies.
Yes, sir. Public Informational Officer just indicated that he will make certain that the website has that added tab for lighting requests as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, Rural County Days and how the general public can go to, is that you also brought that up, Ms. Givens, about rural? How does one attend Rural County Days, basically, if somebody from the community in Tallahassee?
Oh, okay.
And was there transportation for that?
No, there's not. If the public wants to go to Rural County Days in Tallahassee, we strongly encourage it, but they need to provide their own transportation and accommodations.
Thank you.
And I'll also research it further, just because it may be a nonprofit or anything like that, but I'll research for.
Okay, thank you.
With legal as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, one more question.
Is everything?
No, she made the public records a question she read.
And that's what she read.
She had the question though. You covered three things and you didn't cover the last one. What she was talking.
I didn't hear the question.
Will you repeat your last question?
This is the three minutes.
But you just went over all of the other ones, Mayor, and you did not allow for her to finish the, her statement. And so you was walking through all of them except for her fourth question.
I understand what you're saying, but she was not able to.
So you addressed the other three, so why not address the last one? That's what I'm.
Because her time ran out. And if I've gone over for other people, the commissioner, fellow commissioners have been upset.
This is comment, this is comment, feedback time now.
Right, for questions that were posed.
We went over the three. Everybody answered the three. Would, would it appropriate, what is it appropriate to do? I mean, ask the, so it's not, is it appropriate to just not answer the question that she was trying to ask?
Problem is, again, once we do that, we need to do it for everybody in fairness. So let them go over three minutes, even if their questions haven't been posed. And so that sets that precedent. Is that something we want to do? I'm trying to follow the rules that we've set.
Okay, okay. But Mayor, okay, I respect what you're saying, but please be fair. This point going forward, when, when, when the three minutes is up, be fair to everybody going forward because we do not want people sending suing the city because they didn't have, they weren't able to make their, their comments were not being heard. And so if you're going to be fair, just make it three minutes and cut everybody off at the three.
And that's what I've been trying to do. Thank you.
If I may, I would like to offer to the citizen to please come and meet with me. So the additional questions that she may have, I will follow up.
Thank you.
And inform the commissioners as well.
Thank you.
We'll be fair.
Yes, sir.
Consent agenda. Does anybody have any ideas? They want to move from the consent, a poll from the consent agenda, I should say.
I like, ma'am, Madam Mayor, I like the poll A.
A?
Yes.
And I like poll G for discussion.
Do you have anything, Commissioner Campbell, that you want to pull for discussion?
No, ma'am, I don't.
Commissioner Borm?
No, I'll make a motion that we pass the consent agenda with the exception of items A and G.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. A, Adapt Resolution twenty twenty-five R fourteen, approve the additional funds needed for the change order in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars, seventy-six cents for the water treatment plant granulated activated carbon project, city funds. Carlos?
Hello. Good evening to everyone. I would like John to step up in here because he's going to talk a little bit about this project. This is, there is a change order that came from this project and John will explain like what's the project about. And the change order, the amount of the change order, it's like one million twenty-six thousand, but we already have this money approved like by grants, right? So the change order was one, one million and twenty-six thousand. But on grants already approved, we have one million and fourteen thousand. So we're missing twelve thousand. And that's what we're asking the commissioner to approve this twelve, this twelve thousand for continuing the work. So I will have John explain what's going on in that, on that work.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. What we have, as he's explained to you already, is we have a small amount that we don't have enough coverage for. That twelve thousand incorporates the two new valves that we need to have put in for safety reasons. Right now, the valve that has failed is our back flush valve from the elevated tower. So if I cannot shut that valve, I cannot stop the water from coming back to the plant and do work on it. The other one is for the upgraded valves in the whole yard. There's, I believe, seventeen or twenty different valves that needed to go.
twenty different valves that needed to go in with the GAC project. They were accounted for. They were gonna be put underground, but we had to move them to above ground because we have existing stuff already underground. We can't put more there. So basically, we're just looking for the the twelve thousand to get the job finished and finally get this job working. Uh, we've been working on this project now for almost four years. It's been held up with whether we couldn't get parts or piping couldn't come in. It's been a long going process and we're finally getting towards the end of it and we're just a little short on the grand end of it.
And if I may, I love that.
If I may, oh, no, please. If I may ask, and it just may be my lack of familiarity with this project, but when I see change order, I assume this project was in progress, which you just confirmed. It's been going on for a long time. So the way I read it is that an additional one million dollars is needed, even though you've identified where you can pay for that from. I still just wanna understand this additional million dollars for this change order. And I believe it said because operational parameters were updated.
Yes, ma'am.
And my question is, does that mean when the project started, there were a set of requirements? And over the time, they have been updated and we need this additional million dollars to meet the new requirement?
Yes, ma'am. When this project was first designed, it was designed to have the water run through the granulated activated carbon and put in one tank, which is fantastic. But our city will not run just on one tank. I have to have the option to be able to fill two, three different tanks and be able to use a different tank. Without these valves, I can only fill one tank and we will be forever in a deficit on water. So I, there's no other way around it. I have to put these pipes in and these valves.
Okay, and I do wanna clarify, the request is asking for eighteen thousand dollars?
Yes.
Not twelve, twelve plus an additional six for the concrete.
The six would be for the concrete.
So eighteen thousand dollars.
It's eighteen thousand change.
Thank you.
As it says on the.
Doesn't say it on the consent agenda.
Mine does.
It's in the um resolution.
It's in the resolution. It's in the resolution.
And you you, I think you mentioned, are you done? You've mentioned that it's gonna, you know, a hundred percent grant funded, but here it states clearly ARPA funds and for the FD, FDEP grant fund. So how much of the ARPA funds, what's the breakdown in there?
Uh, let me look at the numbers real quick right here.
Yeah, we have it. You have it.
It's it's.
I'm I'm just looking at the consent page.
Said page, you're not looking at the. That's fine. He's gonna provide it.
Sure. Do you have it in there?
We did have it in staff report. I just can't see the staff report on this. But uh the amount initially that was placed in ARPA was um two hundred seventy thousands. And um and it's still in the uh budget for this year.
And it might be on the documents that I uploaded there, in my, in my say, in my.
What a breakdown you said. I don't see.
And are you able to pull up the staff report on this item?
The breakdown and how much of that million fourteen is coming from ARPA and how much is coming from FDEP? Because it was stated, it was a hundred percent grant funded, but but it's not.
Yeah, break down the funding.
She says, she said everything. Let me see, let me see.
It was in there. I don't see it here.
Madam Mayor, can I, if I, um, Commissioner Jones is correct, there is not a breakdown between the um grant and the ARPA.
Make it larger?
There's a total amount for grant and ARPA funds.
But it's not broken up between the funding sources.
Correct.
And I asked that question, and I'll bring it up because when I just asked about the lighting, it seems sometimes that, you know, ARPA have been our saving grace. And I think that we need to be aware. And as Commissioner Borm always say, fiscal responsibility lies on us. We need to be aware of where this money is going and how we choosing to just say, hey, yeah, we're gonna put up funders here or there. Um, so in the effort to do that, that's why I asked that question. I wanna be transparent about it.
That's correct.
And what underlying item, what we.
So that I, that eighteen thousand, it, I'm sorry, I can't read that staff report, but you know, I I I mean, I actually wrote it and everything to try to include.
Yeah, we're talking about the, not the eighteen thousand.
You're talking about, well, the only, but the only thing that this is doing is requesting a budget transfer for the eighteen. But the original budget in this year, uh, in the three hundred, it it was like um two hundred. Originally, when we wrote it, we had those numbers in there.
Yes, I don't have the exact number right here, but it was like eight hundred thousand from ARPA and from FDP, like two hundred and something thousand.
Let's give me a moment. Let me find it. Zero four one.
But we are really just voting on this piece right now. We need that information for future.
Yeah, the commission is okay with it, uh, you know, that explanation, I'm okay with it, but I.
Okay, so originally it was the zero four one.
If I can just continue with what I was getting to. Yes, I recognize we're just voting on eighteen thousand. However, the change order is for over a million dollars. And while you're asking the city for eighteen thousand dollars, the additional million dollars is coming from someplace. And while it's not from the city, I think we still need to understand the drivers and move it, taking money from ARPA funds for it. The money's there, but I I just feel like we have a bigger issue. I understand regulatory changes, but a million dollars worth of regulatory changes, it makes me ask, was the scope of the project correct from the beginning? And is this more than a regulatory change? Is it a scope change? Because I heard you say we can't use one tank. I'm just trying to make sure I understand, even though the project's four years old, I'm coming here new as a new commissioner. I should be able to understand the project, especially if it's four years old. And I should also be able to understand why a one million dollar change order is necessary to meet a need of an existing project. It's bigger than eighteen thousand dollars. It's over a million dollars. The city portion is eighteen, and to Commissioner Jones's point, we still need to be able to make fiscally sound decisions, even if the money's not just coming from the city budget, in my opinion.
And I understand that.
I I don't disagree. And we also need to be able to explain it to any citizen that asks these kind of questions.
And I wanna point out as well is, we're both new here too. So.
All of us are.
The scope of it has changed. No, we've just learned the scope of it.
Right.
Now, was it bad planning four years ago? I can't tell you that. That's not for me to give you. I can only show you and tell you what I need to get this job done and up and running. And I wish I could give you more, ma'am.
The history that I've been able to gain is that four years ago, they awarded uh for this project three point four million. However, they didn't really get it going too much. Uh, as now that we're getting close to final, not even finalization, uh, my understanding is of that entire three point four million, we really have only used about three hundred thousand. Now, this year, with Mr. Sean being there and the activation and working with the uh, the vendor that we now have, they've now said, okay, now we can get to one point eight million. So from a budgeting perspective, during the budgeting, even though our primary person left, but we did have the grants accountant there. So she's the one that has really been helping us through this process. So during the budgeting, the amount of money that was budgeted in anticipation of finishing one point eight million, uh, we budgeted, uh, if you look in your detail on page thirty-three, you'll see uh a GL zero four one eleven five three three six six three three zero. The budget for this fiscal year was one million three hundred seventeen thousand. Because based upon the progress of work that they had completed in the prior year, we knew we needed to have, you know, at least that one point three million in that particular line. So this is your carbon filters. That's what this is. And then um the three hundred fund, unfortunately, I cannot see my line items. Um, just if I have investment when I print it subsequently. And I'll tell you where that is. But in fund three hundred, which is ARPA, by the way. Okay, so in ARPA, uh, the GL number is three hundred six five 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 nine eight five one hundred. We budgeted for this fiscal year two hundred fifty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-seven. So when you add those two together, that was the amount that we expected to spend on this particular project in this fiscal year. So the point is, originally from before any of us got here, and we're all new here, but originally it was eight hundred something thousand during this fiscal year, they said, no, we're gonna spend the one point eight million. Well, we knew that when we were doing the budgeting. So in budgeting, we have in this fiscal year budget the those two items that I identified, which is about one point six million. So we we are covered, but with what they have given us, we see a shortage. The shortage we see is twelve thousand. So this is a multiple year project. We can uh send to uh each commissioner this particular grant, and it's not really even a grant. You know, in reality, it's an SRF. So so uh, what you call that, low interest type loan? That is what is financing this project. And they've been working on it, I guess, for three years, and they have not done much of anything. Now, in this fiscal year since Mr. Sean, you've only been there four, five, six months. Um, how many months you've been there now?
As superintendent, only seven, eight months. That's.
Right. So since he's come on board and we started digging in and working with the contractor, that is why they did send to us, okay, here's the scope. And this is the change order. But in reality, we were approved, my understanding commissioners approved, for this particular project. Uh, you approved the city staff, they were awarded like three point four million for this particular project. So right now, we're at the one point eight level. So there will be monies left over.
Right. So and I think to the points of Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Jones, the uh, what I like to see, and I questioned it before, for all of the projects that we have, to have um where those funds are coming from, the GL lines, and then what's the uh available funds for that and how much has been in in covered? That 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 helps us out in terms of making sure that the projects are 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 within the scope of the budget. And we know how much is being in covered, and we can look at the line without having to ask and rely on um those. And then the other key is the um change orders. Uh, that those are, should be commissioner uh approved change orders as a relation, in when it come, when we wanna approve something and then you get change orders. Those change orders should be something that we understand and know why we were getting those changes. So I think the details in 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 these modification and change, and we can go back and look at it and say, hey, here's why these uh thi- this change order happened. It's almost like change management.
Well, I completely agree with you. And so we received this, this is change order number two.
Right.
Uh, I did see change order number one in my researching this, and it had a value of zero.
Right.
So change order number two, it just came to us on January ninth, twenty twenty-five. So we just got this and that's why we put all that detail in there.
Right. This is not a, uh, you know, we're not bashing session, but I think for clarity and transparency, not only for the commission, but for the community.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions, discussion?
No, I move to accept.
Second.
We have a motion as second. I'm gonna open the floor up to public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment on this item? Seeing none close, public comment, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. On to G, adopt resolution twenty twenty-four R two four A, approving a shortlist of firms for RFQ twenty twenty-four oh seven, continuing engineering, architecture and landscape, architecture services, and authorizing contracting actions and authorizing contract ex- execution. You against?
Well, good evening again.
Yeah, Lorenzo.
Yes, Lorenzo might be coming in a few seconds. So we have an RFQ out. When I came into the city, the RFQ was already um already finished. So we have the evaluation committee. It was me, Lorenzo, and Red, and that has the evaluation committee for these proposals. So we did our homework, we did a scoring there then, like, you know. And then we came with the, you have the the grades and the scores in your in your book right there, and you can see them. So we are proposing to shortlist them to three on each category.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So I pulled that because we just had a thorough training this afternoon in a workshop. And I noticed that, you're right, that was done a little previous that you're sending to us because I looked at the signatures that's on those things. So it's a proposal that's new, however, it was done previous by someone other than you. Maybe?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I mean, the the proposal, the RFP was sent out maybe like in August, something like that.
Do you have it in front of you?
No. No, sir. Like twenty-nine responses, yes.
Well, I'm 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 more on the the one particularly about Hanson.
Okay, what's your? Oh, yes, and I'm sorry, it's request for qualification. I'm sorry.
But, yeah, for qualification. And, uh, you know, since we don't wanna get in front of these things before it come up again. And it's just so on page, on my page, it's uh three, four thirty-nine in our book.
Four thirty-nine?
When we advertised, and it was advertised um June twenty-eight, twenty, twenty-four. So as as these have been submitted, and there are there the three or four companies that wanted to be on that shortlist.
I don't have.
Well, it's four thirty-nine that says page thirteen of eighteen, RFQ, section exhibit B.
Seventy-five.
Two seventy-five?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Yes.
Okay.
Page two seventy-five, four thirty-nine.
Okay, please.
We working tonight.
Yeah, I'm on.
That is, that still ain't one. Let me go back. You made me lose where I was at.
What is it? What are you looking for specifically? Hanson?
The Hanson's, yeah.
So I have that, that's four fifteen.
Three sixty-three.
Okay.
Don't look at me, the computer, it's set up differently.
Yeah, the computer is all thing.
Well, I've got it. I I no worry. I found, we found it.
You have it? Okay, so.
Can you pull that up?
The continuing engineering, engineering, architect, and landscape.
I'm on three sixty-six.
Three sixty-three.
And we just let him get what he's trying to say out, so.
It can't be the same.
I'm getting confused.
Here.
Oh. Yes, that's the one you're looking at.
Yeah, so it's just a whole question and what we talked about earlier today. So I'm not sure, but I wanna know if in fact we have any information that concern this guy. I I'm gonna tell you because I got a a a call asking, is there possible conflict with them being considered? And I think we did a continuing service contract agreement prior to. um, this contact, the person is on here for contact leaving us. And I would like to to clean it up, just to have this personal contact to be one of our current employees here. That makes sense?
Yes, sir.
Because I I'll be, Jonathan Griffin is on here as a contact person for the city of Palaca. But as I understand it, he may have an interest or employment with one of these contractors, the engineering firm of Hanson, maybe, or some type of relationship. So these vendors couldn't come back to us not saying that, hey, you guys knew it was a relationship and you guys considered them or made them the choice. I just wanted to say on record that we are gonna try to correct this before we go forward with it. If you don't want to do it legally, legal, do you have any opinion on it or not?
Yeah, so we can certainly um request that that employee be firewalled. Uh, if we're going to be moving forward with that particular consultant, that can be added um, to avoid any appearance of impropriety, but I absolutely hear what you're saying, given what has been going on with the ongoing investigations in terms of selecting a contractor for the city.
Yeah, so I don't want, I don't I don't want that company hardship by something that we should have cleaned up in the front of it. That's all I'm saying.
Understand.
Thank you, Commissioner, for identifying that. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving forward with G, how do we want to address this? Does anybody want to make a motion to approve it with included in that motion? The subject, recommendation?
Can we make certain that there's no conflict? That's what I'm actually asking legal to do prior to us making that determination.
Yes, uh, we can make a written request for this employee to be firewalled from any services provided to the city of Palaca, so he would have absolutely no contact on any of our projects. And I I believe uh, if it's a reputable company, which I'm sure it is, since it went through the vetting process, that they would want that as well to avoid an appearance of impropriety.
I just want to be fair going forth in the dealings. Handicap up others from doing business with.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that we um, accept this item with the noted requirement. Yes.
Thank you. Your motion?
That's our second.
My motion is second. I'm going to open the floor up to public comment. Is anybody here for public con- comment on this item? Saying we close public comment, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. On to regular business. Do we want to recess? No? Okay, we'll keep moving. Um, A B, you want to recess? We want to, okay, it looks like pain, like discomfort. We'll recess. Keep it at ten minutes exactly, please.
Thank you.
What about? We're on to item eight B, just direction discussion, River Street retaining wall rehabilitation replacement proposal.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I was asked by our interim city manager to find some proposals for the retaining wall at River Street. So I asked one of our engineering firms to get like some proposal, proposals and solutions for this. And you have this on your files. They came with a proposal for construction plans and the bid package, and also preliminary engineering and design survey and all that stuff. And they came with a price of one hundred and twenty thousand to do all this. And after that, also, they're going to give us an estimated cost of how much is going to cost to replace that wall or to repair that wall. So we're asking for your guidance to see how can we proceed with this, this issue that I think it has been like a legal issue before, so.
Any questions?
And that's that leaning wall, River Street. Near um.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Staff usually have recommendations. What's staff recommendation?
Okay, so um, the reason why we brought it up for discussion, we thought that a hundred twenty thousand was a big amount. Uh, but that is the amount in order to just get the engineering done. That is not the project cost. And that is why, for me personally, that seemed to be a a big amount before we pursue spending a hundred twenty thousand dollars for engineering costs. And that's not even uh resolving the issue. Honestly, I would like some direction. Do you want us to proceed?
Well, I think if we look at it in terms of liability, and if we own that wall, that that portion of the property, it will cost us more than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to defend why we did not.
Okay.
Take the engineering costs and repair it, or at least look into. Is it sustainable or not?
Great, and this includes the survey as well?
Yes.
And surveys are very expensive these days, and this is multiple properties, I'm just saying.
Just want to bring this up for discussion.
Yeah, I don't think we really have many options here that we've got to move forward and resolve this issue because it is obviously a big liability.
Yes.
So.
Thank you.
So you have any, you don't have no cost on associated with the to to repair?
No, not right now. Not once, once they finish their job, we I can be here again and tell you like what they find, are they going to replace the wall? Or are they going to repair the the wall? I mean, we need to go out to bid for that, but before going out to bid, we can come here and explain you what the what's the final decision.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So I guess we're suggesting you move forward with this part part of the process.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, on to E, Putnam County Develop- Development Authority um, per state and statute and county ordinance, the mayor appoints commissioners. I have been on it for two years. I appointed Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Campbell and myself. I will remain on it. I was asked to bring this forward by the authority because they just haven't sometimes been able to achieve quorum because other representatives from the city have not been in attendance. So it is within my pur- purview to do this, and so I have. So Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Davis, welcome.
Thank you.
And I couldn't discuss it with anybody who was currently appointed as, because of Sunshine, I couldn't, for example, discuss it with Commissioner Jones or Commissioner Borum. It had to be at this kind of venue, so here we are.
How many members on that that board, uh, mayor?
There are three from the city. There is the mayor of Crescent City. There there are three from the county commission. And then there is um, the person, the president, and then the uh, chair of the board is actually the um, clerk of courts.
So nine people on that board and they can't get quorum?
Sometimes they can't, and sometimes they can. Um, it's it's held, the meeting's at eight thirty or nine in the morning. And I I know I've not missed a meeting, but there've been times when it's been edgy about quorum, um, on the edge of quorum, basically. And so it's just a concern that we cut it that close.
I just tell you right now, I'm glad you changed me out because um, my job changed and um, I know I couldn't make those quorum, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate you for putting somebody else on there, because I I I I do juggle my schedule quite a bit with with all I have on my plate, so thank you. I appreciate it.
Sentiments as well. I'm glad to ha- hand it over to duty to uh, new Commissioner Davis.
Absolutely.
And wish you the best on that that board.
But it might cycle back around to you at some point. Don't get your hopes.
I think they will do a wonderful job.
I have a.
So there we go with that. On to F, discussion direction, Kelly Smith Road rezoning application. Um, and before we go on to that, I have to disclose ex parte communication with Ms. Toby. So um, with that, we go forward to the discussion.
I had a question.
Let me disclose as well. I received an email, uh, tried to return the call, um, but we didn't speak, so.
Anybody else, any disclosures? Okay.
Okay, so this was brought back uh, you know, I meet often with legal, and this is uh, one of the items that uh, we're concerned about, and also the um, Ms. Toby and so forth have come forth uh, requesting that this be placed back on the agenda. And um, I did have uh, city attorney to uh, the today I sent out a synopsis to remind everyone about this um, situation. And it is all about uh, property that have been previously um, well, it's a four parcel, four units, four lots. And uh, one has already been constructed, it was permitted, approved, and all of that. The other three, they are requesting rezoning, which um, we have. The other three, they are requesting rezoning, which, um, we have tabled as a commissioner, board of commissioners have tabled it. And they would like to have a decision. Uh, before we go any further, I'm not saying enough, I would also like the city attorney just to point out some of the things I did not get a chance to say.
Okay, uh, and hopefully you'll be able to, um, hear from the applicants as well there in the audience. Um, I did provide a memorandum per the request of the interim city manager. There's been a little bit of confusion, so I provided a map. I don't know if you have the printout, but, um, there were initially four lots. There's been some confusion about, um, the building permit that was issued for the fourth easternmost lot. That house was fully constructed, it was authorized by the planning board. And then again, by this city commission, it obtained the requisite future land use map, plum changes and rezoning. It was done by the book completely, they got their permit from the county. Uh, I did explain, um, for the sake of our new commissioner, that, uh, and you may already know this, but the building permits are not issued by the city of Palaca. They are issued by Putnam County. We work very closely with the Putney, Putnam County Building Department on the issuance of those permits. But that is not something that we, um, have, we don't have a building inspector of to ensure compliance with the Florida Building Code. Um, but moving on, there were questions from a commissioner on, um, who, the planning board members at the time that these votes were taken. I provided that, um, thoroughly, not much change from the planning boards that are, planning board members that are here now, but a few changes. Um, and I'm just trying to, there was a question on when did Jonathan Griffith's potential conflict of interest first occur? Um, I provided the definition under Florida statutes of what defines a conflict of interest, which is a situation in which regard for a private interest tends to lead to disregard of a public duty or interest. What I can do in terms of answering that question was, um, provide the earliest documentation of Jonathan Griffith's involvement with the Kelly Smith Road lots. From what I was able to glean was July of twenty twenty-two. Um, did the planning department know of Jonathan Griffith's interest in the Kelly Smith Road lots? Yes, um, it was discussed between Lisa Walsh and Jonathan Griffith. And Lisa Walsh also pulled the SunBiz information for the corporate applicant. It's a standard procedure for her and the department, I, I know that Lorenzo does that as well. Um, I became aware of that information, um, on Jonathan's verbal disclosure to Lisa Walsh. Because I picked up the phone and called her and asked. Um, and so although a ver- verbal disclosure was made, he did not provide a written disclosure of his interest in the corporate entity at that time. Um, it wasn't until much later that he did. Um, and then I walked through exactly what a future land use map changes and that it's quasi legislative. Um, and then also what, uh, rezoning changes and that it's quasi judicial. I provided a legal analysis and conclusion, and ultimately did have a recommendation and implementation, which we have already done. My recommendation was that although financial disclosures, um, had been made in terms of the state of Florida Form One, that many of us have to sign off on. It was determined that additional precautions were needed to prevent this from happening in the future. So as a result of this particular matter, um, immediately recommended that the planning department adopt a disclosure of ownership interest for every applicant seeking a comp plan amendment and a development order. And so I did provide, um, Mr. Agimo has extensive experience, uh, down in Palm Beach County, which is certainly experienced. It's a fair share of conflict of interests over the years. And he had, uh, readily accessible that disclosure. Um, we modified it, so it was applicable for the city of Palaca. And now it has been standard operating practice for the planning department to require that disclosure for every comp plan and development order change, um, of the applicant. So we've already implemented that, that's been in in effect since October.
And additionally, uh, I did include some of the forms now that the planning department is using. When anyone comes up for this type of matter, I did attach that and send it as well. And so, um, that's why we brought it up for discussion and direction.
Is there any further questions or discussion? I, I feel it needs to be added, obviously we have to give public notice to the next agenda, that's my suggestion, recommendation. That we have to move forward and resolve this.
I agree.
I asked a question.
Private.
Um, Madam Mayor, you did disclose that you had a conversation. Do you disclose that conversation? Or, I am not saying this, I'm not, I'm not asking a turn of this question, cause I, I don't know, we haven't kind of like had this kind of situation before, but is that something that we all have to be privy of? Since it was disclosed, now we know that it was a conversation and we're gonna be voting on something.
Right, so for, for any land use changes where you're acting in a potential quasi judicial manner. You do have to, um, disclose your ex parte communications, uh, that might affect how you vote on a particular matter. Um, you're more than welcome to meet with the applicant or their agents or whomever you want, but you need to provide that ex parte disclosure. This agenda item is discussion and direction, it's not a quasi judicial hearing today, we are simply asking for direction. So an ex parte disclosure isn't absolutely necessary legally at this stage. I believe the mayor made that ex parte disclosure in an abundance of caution because it may be set for, uh, an agenda item in the future.
That's why, exactly why I asked that question, because the mayor moved to make it an agenda item.
I've made a recommendation.
I mean, well, yeah, so that's why I asked that question, you actually, I just want to get it right.
I, I don't believe the mayor made a motion.
No, that she, but she made a suggestion, that's exactly what she just said.
And, and so long as you disclose your ex parte communication, nothing prohibits you from voting on that agenda item. Now, if you have a conflict of interest where you have a pecuniary gain or loss, then obviously you need to recuse yourself, but that is not the case here.
So let me ask you this, um, and this, this for educational purposes, and my, my educational purpose at this point. So if I said I'd had a conversation. Why disclose it if I'm not disclosing what the conversation was about?
You, you can certainly ask the mayor what the contents of her communication with the applicant were. Um, it is not legally necessary to do that, she needs to disclose that she communicated, so everyone is aware going into a matter. If you have additional follow-up questions, I strongly urge that you ask, um, whoever disclosed.
And here I am, so we actually physically met on Wednesday, the twenty-second at one P M. And basically I listened to her concerns and the fact that she stated that they had done everything they had to do. And that again, Mr. Griffith was no longer a part of this project or involved in any way, shape or form, and that was pretty much it.
Okay.
Okay.
Any conversation about Ms. Walsh at that time?
I'm sorry, what?
Any conversation about Ms. Walsh, Walsh at the time, Lisa Walsh?
Not at all.
Let's ask. Secondly, um. You referred to it as Kelly Smith Road, but when we actually voted on this property, it was Krill Avenue. And I think the address was seven three forty-one Krill Avenue.
Correct.
So.
And there's a reason for that, um, the, the parcel extended to the north, there was Krill. To the south, there was Kelly Smith Road, the parcel extended the entire length of, of that property. And it fronted on Krill originally. Then they sought to basically, um, have a lot split. And they were basically planning a subdivision, and as a result of that, the lots that were formed to the south, fronted Kelly Smith Road. So there was a change when they established those new property identification numbers. Uh, not only was there an establishment of new property identification numbers, but the address changed as well, because it was no longer fronting Krill.
Right, I don't want to have questions about it, nobody else have questions?
Okay. Would you like to come up, do you have anything else you'd like to say in terms of this discussion? And please give us your name and, and city or town of residence for the record.
Uh, Toby McWigan, uh, Green Cove Springs, Florida. And I'm here, I've reached out to everybody, I sent everybody an email just that way, cause sometimes a one-on-one is a little bit better to say what, what's the concerns, you know? This is a super confusing way that we did it, and I wanted to kind of go from the beginning to the end. And I think that's why I made a little timeline for everybody. So if there's any concerns, I mean, just ask me.
Any questions, concerns?
I don't want to take up all the time, so nobody else have a question?
No, that's why no one else had one, go ahead.
I, I do, so. On this property. And I do understand the processes, it's not about the processes, it's about when we learn that there, uh, some potential gain of an ex-employee at the time, so, um. That's what halted, and you know, your pro- your, your, your progress. Um, and I just want to ask you at this point, it. Can I? That's, uh, that's, so, did you at any time think that it might have been a conflict of interest at all? The way things were going?
I mean, he's seen that we built about thirty houses here, and he had seen that property, and he was like, came to us and said, hey, this might be a good opportunity for you, and I'd like to partner up with you. I didn't see any reason why somebody couldn't invest in their own city. You know, it didn't occur to me that there were, you know, and that's not my, I'm a builder, you know, I don't work for the city. And I had met with Lisa, Josh and I met with Lisa, and we talked to her first, you know? Before I even agreed to do anything with Jonathan, to make sure that she was on board with what our vision was and get ideas from her. And she was one of the ones that suggested, you know, hey, it would be nice to have those ones facing Kelly Smith be residential, because I don't want to have a road coming straight through Krill. Straight to Kelly Smith and have another thing dumping out right there, she's like, the traffic would be horrendous. So we talked about doing a squiggly line, and I mean, we had many meetings about it before we actually got there.
And where I kind of got confused is, it's, it's four lots, and, and when we bought it up and you were here, when we bought it up. And I kept saying, I see four lots, everybody else said three, as if I was seeing things, and I say, no, I see four lots. So you guys don't own that fourth lot, or didn't own that fourth lot, or who owned that fourth lot?
We owned it, so what we did, because time is everything, is I asked Lisa, how long will it take to get a plat done? And she's like, well, it could take three, four, five months to get through the whole plotting process. And I said, well, how could we at least just get one lot out so we can build a house while we're going through the plating process? He said, well, do a one-time lot split, and then you can build on that one lot, we'll get it rezoned. And then after that, you could work on doing the three lot subdivision, so that's how that all came, it's just timing. So that way, we were able to build a house while we were doing the plat.
And in an effort to get the work done, this, this is, uh.
Yeah, cause our money's sitting in that, so as soon as I get a house built.
I truly understand your position on that, but, yeah, I think it was ten twelve twenty-two when, um. On that parcel of land. It said the application was signed by Jonathan as the agent for the seller. Because the deed was not yet recorded by, from body.
Title company.
To J, J, uh, J T one. And we didn't want to miss the deadline for the next scheduled meeting. We closed on it ten ten twenty-two, and the application was signed on ten twelve twenty-two. The deed was recorded ten fourteen twenty-two.
And all of that was discussed too, it's like, well, how do we get it onto the next meeting? And she's like, well, you gotta have everything turned in by this date, so we were pushing on the title company and hurry up and get this deed recorded. And they were dragging their feet, so we said, well, what if we just act as the agent and get the application moving? And Melissa knew who we were and what we were doing, what we were trying to accomplish, and she was being accommodated, you know? Hey, guys, you could do it like this to save some time, otherwise here is another two weeks, so we have to get on to another meeting.
So, so at that, at that, at that time, did you know what position that Mr. Griffith held here at the city?
Yeah.
What position was that?
He was, uh, I think he was interim city manager.
And Ms. Walsh worked up under him, his direction. All right, I, hey, and I didn't call the court a lot, I just had those questions, and to me, I saw a conflict, and so.
I wasn't trying to do anything. I'm above board, I mean, we planned on being here for a while, we're gonna be in front of you again with another subdivision in a couple of weeks, so I mean, it's. We're here to do well with the city.
Well, Mr. Griffith, it is involved with your business that.
This one, he came to.
Any kind of way, so.
No, this one, he came to us, that's why we formed a whole different LLC, I don't want him to be part of my building business, I've been doing this for twenty years. So he saw an opportunity and he knew what we were doing here, and he said, hey, this could be a good partnership. So we did a joint venture, which was solely just for this project.
That you was earning money?
Yeah.
No further question.
Go ahead.
When did, um, Jonathan divest from this project?
Um. It was right after everything. Couple of months ago, right?
We had that data on here.
I think in the documentation, it says December.
Yeah, I think it was December.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yep. Backwards here. Yeah. That was, it was in December.
Another question.
Are you shut?
So if. If this commission does not approve what you're asking us to approve at this point. Would you not be able to do? Any work on the county side of that property?
I've got a plat, I mean, that's something I'd have to.
There's, the entire parcel was annexed in.
Into the city.
Into the city.
But they're asking us, so, so, so the ask right now is to.
Is to, to do two things, uh, a future land use map change for those three maps, oh, for those three lots, excuse me, and then a rezoning. Currently, they are zoned commercial.
Well, I should have said, a commercial, did you do anything commercially on that?
Now that they're platted into three individual lots, I wouldn't be able to, they'd be useless to me.
As the commission did approve the change in the plotting from what it was previously.
So it probably should have happened concurrently with the plating.
And it should have happened concurrently, but it did not.
Do you know why that didn't happen, Mayor?
I'm not even sure why that didn't happen, to be honest with you, I don't know. I don't know.
Usually. So, so the, the reason was, um, is because Lisa felt that the plat needed to be done first, so you could have, uh, the property appraiser establish property identification numbers for each of the lots before you proceeded with the, um, comp plan amendment, plum changes and the rezoning.
Yeah, but that hadn't happened, because when we, we asked, when we first shown those property, uh, those property lines as they were identified, they did not have any identification. Even in one thirty-four, if I'm not mistaken, uh.
Uh, all, all of them have their own separate parcel ID numbers, a- at this point at least, and if, if we can pull that map up again.
At this point, but they didn't.
It doesn't happen instantaneously, um, it, it does take a little bit of time to, for the property appraiser to get that plat. They have to check the meets and bounds, make sure that it complies with Florida statute one seventy-seven. It, it's not an instantaneous process, but if you pull up on the Putnam County Property Appraiser site, and this is exactly where this G I S map came from. Even though you can't see it, because it's small, each of those four lots on the bottom of that parcel. even though you can't see it because it's small, each of those four lots on the bottom of that parcel have their own parcel identification number now.
Mayor, I do have a, so I'm going to digress in a different line of questioning. And if we can do this, I want to separate the conflict of interest that we have been pursuing from the request to rezone the property. And I guess my question is, barring what was discovered in the relationship, is this request unusual? And does it meet any require, meet the requirements to be rezoned as requested?
That there is nothing about this request that's unusual. We actually have two agenda items following that are very similar, but I'll let the planning director speak to the issue as well.
Speak to this.
The application meets all the standards for zoning for the future land use amendment. And the, the lot that was created, the first lot, that was created for a split lot, that went to the city commission, it was rezoned, the future land use was changed. And then the applicant was to a building permit and they build a house on it. There's nothing unusual about this, about this request.
And it's been your ongoing recommendation as the planning director that this go forward.
We have the staff report, you know, written months ago, and nothing has changed. We still recommend approval.
Thank you. And I just want to go on the record and say that at this point, I am in favor of us moving on to getting this on the agenda. While I recognize the issues surrounding it, I believe in order to be fair to the applicant and to be fair to the process and in support of our staff recommendation that we have to decouple the questions and the concerns regarding the perceived, and I'm sorry, I don't want to use the wrong word, not necessarily perceived, but the conflict of interest from a former employer. And possibly what I hear, two former employers who are no longer here that we cannot hold captive in this process and discussion, the applicant. So I am in favor of us moving forward.
I agree.
Any other questions or discussion about this?
No, I just like the city manager on this, on page four, four eleven of four thirty-nine.
Four eleven of four thirty-nine?
Yes, ma'am. To do to read the third bullet point fourth, and then what started at January twenty twenty-three.
And so
Help me understand.
Okay, you would like me to read the third bullet under July twenty twenty-two?
Yes, ma'am. And, and then all the points to July, and, and yeah, January twenty-three.
Okay. So we agreed per this project ownership timeline prepared. Not you. Okay. We agreed to form a partnership and create it JJJ T one LLC with an effective date of July twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. Our signed operating agreement stated that each of us had a twenty-five percent ownership stake. And the purpose of the company was to purchase, develop, and sell homes on the Krill Avenue project. So that's July twenty twenty-two. January twenty twenty-three.
No, ma'am. The next bullet.
The next one. Okay. Jonathan and Julian were investors. They agreed to share in the cost of buying the land, developing and funding the bills. Josh and I agreed to the same. And we all agreed to use A and M Home Buildings LLC to build the homes. A and M would charge a contract fee to build the homes and upon sale. Partners.
January twenty twenty-three?
January twenty twenty-three, Josh and I were approached by Jonathan and asked if we could change the org ownership structure of JJJ T one LLC. He explained that he and Charlie Douglas had an agreement to put all their real estate deals under an LLC Nextdoor Real Estate. And that all terms of our joint venture would remain the same. We agreed with the terms that Josh and I combine our shares to equal the fifty percent ownership matching their fifty percent. And Nextdoor State would be considered a limited partner, with Josh and I retaining complete control. The proper change forms were filed with the annual report on some beds. Believe Commissioner Campbell.
All right. So in August twenty twenty-four, Toby and Josh Alexander Anderson made an offer to Nextdoor Real Estate to purchase their shares of the company. All I want to do is have that read into this record so that we have now discovered. Ms. Toby, I can't pronounce your last name, sorry. Is requesting something, but so that we talked about this, but it's never read out. We didn't talk about what happened with an investigation that the taxpayers paid for. So we're almost, it would be like a taxpayer sitting out in audience, kind of wondering what we're talking about in this scenario. And not to have, have a penalty on you being the investor. But there's things that occurred that I think is our responsibility to ask the questions about it. So in an effort to not look like we're on a witch hunt, is to disclose some things did happen that we were concerned about. Okay? So that's where I am with this. I'm not at this point for or against. I wanted the facts, ma'am. And you provided this with this synopsis. Matter of fact, I almost want to say you did better than what we've asked for in previous communication, just to be honest with you, the way you ran it down.
They gave them all this months ago.
Yes, ma'am. And it could, and it would have cleared up and could have probably saved us tens of thousands of dollars.
My attorney's not here tonight because I can't afford much more.
Yeah. So I appreciate your thoroughness, your candor and your upfrontness. So with that, going back, I, I don't disagree to bring it back up, but I do agree to bring this out into the public. And so we would know. And there's no, we're not concealing anything. Okay, thank you.
And if I may, I would like to mention that what Ms. Toby did prepare was a direct request of all this meeting and our city attorney advising or saying like, hey, our commissioners need to know everything. And so that's what we actually could do. And we appreciate that you did it. And as you can see, the commissioners appreciate it.
Thank you.
We did work together. I don't want you to think that we didn't.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We're going to go on to public hearings. On its twenty-two. I thought we did give direction, but go ahead, reiterate it, please, Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, the direction is to move forward with bringing this on the agenda for us to consider.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Now I understand. Thank you.
Public hearings ordinance twenty twenty-four fifteen, establishing the McLaurie Cove Townhouse Community Land Unit Development. Mr. Gamer.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the second reading of the request to approve a flying unit development known as McLaurie Townhouse Development. The only change since the first reading is that we finally got a development agreement. That is, you probably have a copy in front of you. And we just the only change. And we're asking that that development agreement be part of the ordinance as an exhibit number three.
Thank you. Do you have anything you need to say or add to this conversation?
Yes, I did unmute.
We figured it out. Okay.
I've been trying to speak since nine thirty-eight on other subjects, but for the sake of time, we can move forward.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Campbell. My apologies.
I don't want to go back in the meeting. I've been trying to speak for the last couple of, and I've put it in the chat and all of that. I've been trying to speak. So for the sake of time, I like to move forward, but I've been trying to speak since the topic of me being appointed to the board. My hands been up and all of that, and I had to call City Hall three different times.
I didn't see his hand up. My apologies.
I apologize.
Okay. Please come up. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Shleen Estes Jacksonville, Florida. I really don't have anything else to add except for the development agreement is in front of you now. And we're very pleased that it is in front of you and we are finally here. But I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the staff and the team that I've been working with this entire time because they have been incredible and patient is a very big word. Because I am a lot sometimes, and we've gotten through it. So I just appreciate all of you and your staff. So.
Thank you. I'm going to open the floor up to public comment. And we have a card here for Ms. Duke.
Vicki Duke Palaca, Florida. I didn't make a comment the, at the last meeting when we had the first reading. And I know this is the second reading, and I'm sure everything's just going to go right through. But I did have a couple of questions because I didn't have any, I didn't really know any information about the townhouse complex. So just out of curiosity, I wanted to know, you know, how many townhouses are going on this property? And the estimated amount of money they're going to be asking for each one of these townhouses. That's just a curiosity question. And the other question, though, was my concern about, are you going to fence a retention pond? I know in so many communities now, they're requiring that to protect children and anybody from drowning in those ponds when you develop something now that it's enclosed and secured to prevent drowning. And that was my two questions.
Thank you. Is anybody able to answer those concerns?
Yeah, I can answer some of the questions. The number of units is two hundred and forty-eight townhouses. And the impact fee has not been calculated yet. That will be calculated at the time of the building permit. And then not, not there yet. It is just approved for, for the PUD, the flying unit development. They're going now through the process of getting the plat. That will take a few months. And then after that, they're going to issue the building permits.
Thank you. So any other?
Retention pond, what about that?
Fence.
That will be part of the, of the, the building permit when they go through. They have to comply.
The fencing.
Yes, that will, that will be a requirement, you know, for the building code that they have to apply.
I just wanted to make sure she understood.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here for public comment? Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to actually add a little bit to that. We will comply with code. There is a slope requirement of four to one that we will build our ponds to. And we will, of course, we will comply with code, what Florida code is right now for building code. So.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to give you my card.
Thank you. Any other folks here for public comment?
I've got a question.
Be one minute. I was closing public comment. Okay. I was trying to close public comment, then you couldn't have your question. Thank you. And if there's no one else here, closing public comment, go ahead.
Other questions you had as relates to the estimated cost of the, the units. I know they might have a range or whatever, but can you speak tonight at this time?
Yeah, I mean, I'll give you the same answer I've given before that because I really don't like to answer that question because of market.
Well, you don't, well, you don't have to.
No, so it's just really hard. And I would hate to tell you something. And then two years down the road, when we were ready to build the first one.
We want to hold you to it. We're not starting building.
Immediately, immediately, as soon as we can.
All right, we just.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Campbell, since I neglected you before, do you have any questions, information?
Yeah, I don't want to say it. Would you, it probably have been something on the system side because I unmuted and was trying to speak out, so I don't.
Yeah, I didn't see a hand up. I really kept looking at you.
And I put it in the chat, so I don't want to blame it on any of the commissioners or any, anyone, but it may just been a mishap on muting on this side of the computer. So, but I have not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that said, do we have a motion?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Do we have a motion? Don't fight. Okay, who wants the motion? Who wants the second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor. Aye. Any opposition? Thank you.
All right. I'll have to be first.
On to ordinance twenty twenty-four sixteen, rezoning one ten South State Road nineteen, rezoned from general commercial C one to intensive commercial C two. Mr. Gamer, second reading.
This, this is a second reading for this rezoning. And nothing has changed in the first reading, and staff recommend approval.
Okay. And is there anything you want to contribute, Mr. Pelosi?
Not particularly. Walton Pelosi, or one thirty-two Buffalo Bluff Road, co-owner of the property, and be happy to answer any questions that you might have that I can possibly do.
Thank you. I don't know that anybody has any questions. Is there anybody here for public comment? Same number, public comment. Any questions?
Next one.
Mr. Pelosi, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
The motion is second, all in favor. Aye.
Very much.
Attorney West?
No, you're great. I was going to use this as a learning moment on rezonings and quasi judicial hearings, but you're all good and it's late.
Do we have any commissioner comments? Commissioner Campbell, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
What is this child's name?
Jordan Renee Campbell.
Okay.
All right, all right, Jordan.
Another Jordan.
Yeah.
But I do want to quickly say thank you to all of those who took part in the MLK festivities this past weekend. It was a major success, and we look forward to holding additional events in the future. Our keynote speaker was Ms. Yolanda Cash Jackson, who is our lobbyist for Becca Polioff. She was phenomenal. So again, thank you to the citizens that showed.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I have a comment. Commission, city manager. Looked like she had a medical emergency. She's all right? City manager. Madam clerk. Two things. Could we have the tabs put back on the?
Yes, I already met with her and I did request it already.
That'll help. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit. So that's the one. Number two, could we be cognizant of how we stack this agenda? This agenda, we're going into almost ten o'clock at night after being here today at four o'clock, most of you guys. Because we want to be fair with people that take the time out to attend these meetings and have public comments. We don't want to rush them. We don't want to cut them off. And in the effort to hear what they're saying, we know we have to get through this agenda packet. We need to be careful. It's just a lot. And if there's some things that can be delayed, or there's some type of recognition that maybe could wait, let's take this as a consideration because it, it really, this is, this is a long day. Anybody, especially those of us who actually work a full-time job all day then come in here. And again, thank you for staying the course. I appreciate it. You don't have any comp time, so. So I just want to make that. So please let me be cognizant of that. Because we have people that filled out cards that actually left because we didn't get to them. And maybe we need to think about where we put public comments. So just, just a food for thought. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I think we've had that in the past. There was a reason why we changed it.
Because, yeah, they want to hear what we want to say first, and then they have comments about what we, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but I remember that, that we did do that. We moved it. Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but I remember that, that we did do that. We moved it because I think it was a public, more or less a public request.
We moved it, but I think we have to be mindful of the dialogue that we are having when it comes down to some of the items that are because I think those are the things, because this is quite a short or could have been a short meeting.
Been a short, right.
We can have longer meetings, well, we've gotten that before. I think the commentary or the load that was put on here was put on here not knowing that it would take the route that it did. So I want us to be mindful and considerate of that as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Borum?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate Commissioner Campbell on his new member to his family and continue to keep, keep fruitful and multiply. You're doing a great job. Also, I want to thank the staff for the wonderful job that they always do day in and day out, helping our city. Thank our board for the work that we put in here every day, day in and day out. And again, we want to continue to provide the necessary service for our citizens, public health and safety, top of our list. And so again, we want to continue to thank the staff, I mean, citizens for coming out and participating with us. So thank you, Ms. Duke, and everybody in Cyberland. So that's all I have.
Commissioner Davis?
Congratulations, Commissioner Campbell, and welcome to our new city clerk, Ms. Karen.
Wonderful job. Thank you.
Yeah, great job.
Anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.